...happen and you have to just get started and commit to it. And once you're on the path, and then once you start seeing results, people are amazed and say, "Oh, you know what? This is good. I've lost so much weight and I'm beginning to look better and my puffy eyes are going away and things are starting to change and I'm more motivated and inspired and you know what? I'm kinda liking this. It's not that, that difficult."
Well, and what I love was that initial starting point. How about walking? Vigorous walking. It's so easy for us to get locked up in our living rooms and stuck on the computer. And yet, you even demonstrated quite clearly that people use that as their jumping off point. Just walking.
Well, the neat thing about walking is for most of us, it's something we can all do.
Right.
No matter what environment you live in, whether it's city or country or suburb, you can always just put one foot in front of another.
Right.
And walk down the street. And people have done that. And literally, the studies have shown that just a half hour of walking a day can make all the difference. I like other more active sports, but the point is, as long as you walk, as long as you get up and move. We're not built to sit.
No, we really aren't. And of course, having productive work ahead of you is also something useful. Don't think that, "Oh, I'm retired and can't do anything anymore." Now, it's time for a short break. When we return, we will continue our discussion on longevity, health, and fitness for seniors. We'll be right back. Our topic today, Reverse Aging Now: How to Improve Longevity, Health, and Fitness for Seniors. Our guests are filmmakers Paul Suchekki and Carol Lisa Pomerantz. You know, I'm so pleased that you came in today to have this discussion and that you have product out there in the marketplace for people to access. But Paul, you mentioned this more than once here. The difference between your chronological age and your biological age. And why is that distinction so important?
The difference is important because you actually have a major effect on your biological age. What you do, literally, every decision you make, should you have an apple as opposed to ice cream? Should you have a cigarette or not? I mean, it goes right down the list of things you can do to enhance how you are biologically. Chronologically, you can't change it.
Right.
We're locked in. But when we're talking about reversing aging, we're literally talking about people who have not paid attention to how they're taking care of themselves. And they have an opportunity to take this decline that we all experience and turn it around. Now, you won't turn it around forever. You can't be 60 and suddenly become 20.
Right.
But what happens is, let's say that you're 60 and your body is actually equivalent to seven-year-olds. You can take it back to 50.
Exactly.
And then slow down.
And we all hear that. Today's 60 is yesterday's 40. But let's take another part of the documentary that shows the differences between chronological and biological age.
As I watched my grandmother and other people gain weight, die early, as I grew older, I anticipated being active.
How did you do today?
Pretty well three feet, four inches. And I guess for a 73-year-old lady, that's not too bad.
There is a difference between chronological age and biologic age. Chronological age is the time since your birthday. Biologic age is how certain biomarkers of aging stack up.
How your different organ systems are aging and what we could do to intervene on that aging process by slowing it down or even reversing the aging of that particular organ system.
There are literally hundreds of interventions that you and I can benefit from today that can modify the rate at which we age. In some cases, we can slow human aging. In some cases, we can actually reverse the aging process.
Senegenics is a longevity clinic where all patients get tested for biological age.
Down your body, all the way.
You see a lot of our patients coming in that are on the cutting edge in anti-aging. They are in their 40s, 50s, 60s. They're scoring in their 30s. We have another group that's diametrically opposed to that. And it's normally people in their 50s and 60s, just not taking care of themselves. Those are the people we'll see scoring 10 years older than they are.
We're really not concerned with what their score is on day one. What we want to see is that year to year, they're improving or plateauing. We know that a population left to natural devices and normal aging processes will decline year to year. So the age scan gives us a way to measure and monitor how well they're doing.
All of this decline with age in a slope that steepens. The earlier we change our lifestyles, the better. When we take steps to reverse aging, we restore wellness, feel and look better, and have more energy. We can actually start aging more slowly.
So we would compress our disease, period, until very near the end of our lives.
It's not the older you get, the sicker you get, but the older you get, the healthier you've been.
Wow, that's a very hopeful message, that's for sure. Now, Carol Lisa, you were, you shared with us that you started this process of taking better care of yourself some years ago.
Yes.
And I gotta tell you, you're a wonderful advertisement for this. Would you share with us your age, please?
Certainly.
Okay. Now, this is gonna shock you. Everybody stand by.
On my last birthday, September 9th, I was 62.
Wow, amazing.
Thanks.
Because you really, you look fit and well.
Thank you.
And your attitude has improved. That's pretty fantastic.
Thanks.
That's great. Now, Paul, I'm gonna embarrass you here for a little moment. Down here, I have some hardware. Look here. This is an Emmy, folks. Now, talk to me about this. This is an award that's just not given out willy-nilly.
Well, I've worked at Channel 35 as a producer for about three years now. And I was fortunate enough with several people in this room, as a matter of fact, to have actually won this award for a project I did called Outdoor Electrical Safety, which is another life-saving documentary.
Right. And you mentioned to me earlier in the green room that one of the most compelling parts of it, it was so true. And you found a guest whose passion about the subject came through. Well, then, I have, you've also won awards already, a telly for Reverse Aging Now. Carol Lisa, if you could hold that up again for us, please.
Certainly.
Okay, this is, this is not intimidating. I have, I've seen it myself. I took the time. I didn't feel like I was being lectured to or beaten up as like, "Hey, Paul, here's the information for you and you can do something about improving the quality of your life." Which I suppose was the intention all along.
Exactly.
Yeah. Now, if people can contact or get ahold of the DVD by going to reverseagingnow.com. And you were saying you have a newsletter as well as part of the website?
Absolutely. We have a free newsletter that at this point comes out every other month, but we're hoping to bring it up to a monthly basis. Plus, we have free videos that are also accessible through the site.
Oh, great.
Individuals, for example, we have one of superfoods, super drinks. Carol Lisa actually teaches people how to hike.
Oh, perfect.
Extension of walking.
Wow.
Various other things. And if you go to the site, reverseagingnow.com, you can actually register for the newsletter and watch the videos as well. We've released the free videos on YouTube and there are links to it on the site.
That's smart. We have to use every media platform available to us. Well, let's take a minute here and look at some of the highlights from your film.
In the show, we looked at the biology of aging, the whole theory behind it, everything from wearing tear to telomeres to free radicals. We also did some major interviews with people in the field, like Dr. Walter Willett of the Harvard Medical School. We went to all the big universities, including, of course, Yale, where we interviewed Dr. Nicholas Pericone. Stanford University's Michael Bryant-Snovodskiy, who's the father of CT imaging in many respects. USC, we talked to Caleb Finch, a prominent scientist on anti-aging. Dr. Roy Wofford, who I mentioned earlier, from UCLA Medical School. We also talked with Mary Hardy, who's the leading herbologist at City Sinai Medical Center. Christiane Northrup is an expert on menopause. She was very instrumental. And of course, we dealt with diet. This is Dr. Robert Atkins of the Atkins Diet. He, of course, has a very controversial diet that was attacked by people like Dean Ornish, who's primarily vegetarian in his outlook. The best balance we actually found was from Dr. Barry Sears, the inventor of the Zone Diet, who is very easy to talk to and has the most sensible, practical way to actually reverse aging. Exercise is a key part. This is a karate class for grandmothers. We looked at the healing power of fruits and vegetables in a painless way to get it into your system, and that's through juicing. Which is amazing way to take all these fruits and vegetables and just put them in a glass. And it's a delicious way to handle it. We looked at alternative medicines such as, for example, in this particular case, herbal medicine, which is nothing but weak drugs. This is acupuncture. And one of the things we discovered was that rather than go for an invasive facelift, you can actually get acupuncture facelifts to make you look far younger. Past the alternative medicine, we went to the cutting edge of science. This is CT scanning to look at your body. That's Carol Lisa, by the way.
We also went to...
No, you wouldn't have. We also went to laser eye surgery, which is a way to actually do anything the contact lenses can do in terms of giving you back the sight that you had when you were a kid. Human embryo cloning is a remarkable process that will grow replacement organs. You can get a new heart and kidney. This is still happening right now. Right now, they're doing with kidneys for mice. We even went to the island of Okinawa. We looked at the world's longest-lived people. These are people who not only practice diet and lifestyle changes, but also have a very strong spiritual life and social life, two elements that are very important to reverse aging. And they do it very effectively. We have a longevity workbook on every DVD that allows you to track your own progress. And as we've mentioned before, we also have a free newsletter. All you have to do is sign up. You get this every month or two. After two years of cutting this, I got fat and old, to be blunt about it. This is me and Carol Lisa at a Christmas party. I decided to take matters into my own hand, looked at my biological age, reversed it by seven years according to the biomarkers involved, took three, five pounds off my weight, and basically took 25 minutes off my time in the Malibu triathlon that I had run as a mere youth of 47.
Wow, that's, see, it's fantastic. It's good to be, that's how I feel about the Department of Aging. You know, I'm not only a booster for the department, but I'm a client, too. Because we have a lot of senior people, something my wife and I, that we were taking care of. This is so important for the future that is looming right there in front of us as seniors need to stay in the workplace. I mean, retirement for many people is just not an option anymore. And a senior workforce is going to have to be fit and mentally sharp. Did you run across statistics like that where you found that people were staying, working 60, 70, 75 years?
Well, not only are they working longer, but when they do retire, they don't retire. They retire from what they've been doing for many years and they get all the Bennys and the Perkeys, but then they go off into their new life.
Right.
And you need to, of course, be fit and healthy to do what you want, when you want.
Right.
And that is the ultimate, the ultimate retirement is to do new things and retire.
Well, I'm gonna remind you again, this is Reverse Aging Now, and Paul and Carol Lisa have come up with something, I can recommend this. I watched it and I won't say I was spellbound, but I was sure interested because you were talking to me. Once again, our time is up for today's edition of Aging in L.A. Special thanks to our guests, filmmakers Paul Suchekki and Carol Lisa Pomerantz. And now, it's time for today's Senior Stat Shot. Today, let's look at longevity statistics from around the world and see how long Americans can expect to live compared with those living in other countries. If you live in Andorra, a small principality between France and Spain, you stand the best chance of living longest. Citizens there have a life expectancy of 84 years. Residents of Hong Kong average 82 years. Japan, 81 years. Sweden and Switzerland, also 81 years. And citizens of Australia can expect a lifespan averaging 79 years. Moving to our own continent, Canadian life expectancy averages 80 years. Citizens of the United States, 78 years. And people from Mexico can expect to live to an average of 75 years. The worst countries for life expectancy are in Africa. 11 countries on that continent average only 38 years of life expectancy. And that's today's Senior Stat Shot. I'm Paul Peterson. For the Los Angeles Department of Aging, the people here at City View Channel 35, and all of our guests on Aging in L.A., thank you so much for watching. We'll see you the next time. Carol Lisa, thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you very much and good morning. This is Tuesday, March 29th, 2011. Welcome to City Hall and the City Council chambers. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council. Council meets three times per week, on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. All meetings are open to the public. And for those who cannot make it to City Hall, the meetings are televised on Channel 35 or can be viewed by visiting our website. Mr. Clerk, if you would please call the meeting to order?
Our Conkardnas, Han, Huizar, Coetz, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present in a corner, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. All right, what's our first item of business?
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Labange moves, Mr. Reyes seconds.
Committory resolutions.
Mr. Zine moves, Mr. Rosendahl seconds.
Madam President, today is Tuesday. Now would be the time for the flag salute.
All right, um, let's see. Why don't I ask Mr. Zine if he would lead our body and everyone in the council chamber for the flag salute?
Please stand for the, uh, stand for the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the power of the United States of America, not the UN, for which we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, someday.
Thank you. Please be seated.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. So, Madam Clerk, why don't we run through the agenda first and then we will take a public comment?
Item number one is an item notice for public hearing.
Are there any cards on that matter?
No cards.
All right. All right, that'll be called special. Next item?
Items two through nine are items for which public hearings have been held.
Members, are there any specials? Any specials, any cards on these items?
There's a card on item number nine. The public hearing has been held.
All right, nine does have a card. We will open the roll on those items. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 nyes.
Next item?
Items 10 through...
Madam Ford, fourth, has been requested to go forth with.
Items 10 through 28 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Mr. Zine?
You know, Wednesday, please.
You want to continue it until Wednesday?
Yes.
Item 27.
Yes.
Mr. Zine has requested a continuance. Uh, Mr. Parks?
Can I get, uh, items, uh, three and four forthwith? And could we reconsider nine until I talk with airport personnel?
All right, great. Let's, uh...
Twelve.
And 12, you want...
Twelve, please.
Ms. Han, 12. All right, and then, um...
I'll put back Janice.
Let's open the roll on reconsideration on item number nine.
Twelve?
Close the roll.
Can you...
Hold on, Mr. Rosendahl. All right, tabulate the vote.
14 nyes.
Okay, so item nine is reconsidered. And Mr. Parks, you want some time to meet with the airport folks?
Yes.
All right, so we'll put up, not, item nine back up there. Uh, Mr. Rosendahl, did you call 10 special?
Is 10, uh...
Did you want to call 10 special?
Yes.
Okay. Hold on.
The one you're talking about.
Okay, they're related. 10 and one are together. Okay. Okay, Madam Clerk, uh, open, do we open the roll on the remaining items? Okay, let's do that.
Uh, Madam President, we have cards on item number 26.
Okay. Members, any other specials? Okay, hold on, hold on. All right, any other specials? All right, any, let's open the roll on the remaining items, please. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 nyes.
Next item?
23 is forthwith.
Okay, hold on, let's do that all at the end. Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Cardenas?
23 forthwith, please.
Okay, he got it. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Huizar?
25 forthwith, please.
Sorry, I couldn't hear you.
25 forthwith.
All right, thank you. All right. Any other specials, members? So open the roll on the remaining items?
Already done.
Already done, okay. Next item?
Madam President, that would take council back to public comment.
All right. Let's go with that. Let me know if you get any others. First public comment will be by Bill Hui. Yes, Mr. Rosendahl.
Item 16 of Friday's agenda, I'd like us to reconsider that.
All right, uh, let me see, let me check with the city attorney to see how we do that. Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Rosendahl wants to reconsider an item from Friday's agenda?
After public comment, council and the clerk will have to find out the item number, the council file number, and a description of the item.
All right, if you would work on that while we're going to public comment. Thank you. Mr. Hui?
Okay. Good morning, members of the L.A. City Council. My name is Bill Hui. I'm the president of Fair Housing Coalition dot com. We believe in equality under the law for landlords and renters. I want to introduce you to Grandma Lane. She's 86 years old. This is a woman who came to America, a naturalized citizen, did everything legally. She's been a volunteer in her community in Cypress Park for many, many years. She's raised seven children, paid off her mortgage. She's been an actress, she's been a physical therapist, and she marched with Martin Luther King back in the day. All her life, she's been helping people. Unfortunately, the L.A. Housing Department came down on her life recently. A lady moved into one of her units and the lady was a front for a gang. The gangs often use very nice-looking people to rent apartments and then they leave and the gang moves in. Well, a gang moved in, took over her building, started trash and wrecking the building. The Housing Department comes by and blames her because in L.A., there is no gang problem. It's the landlords who are the real predators here. So they put her in REIT, they almost bankrupt her. She has to go over $200,000 in debt at this point in her life. She's got to be working again at the age of 86. And now we're trying to get some justice for her. So after the Housing Department did nothing but give her more fines, more fines, she finally went $200,000 in debt, brought her building up to code, and the gang left because another gang was looking for them. So now, she's suing the city because that's her civil rights, and the Housing Department came back and they want to put her in REIT again. That's how they retaliate. That's how they retaliate. The biggest crime organization in L.A. is not the gangs, it's the L.A. Housing Department. And you know what? This anti-agenda of being against landlords and against small business owners that we have in L.A., that's what's making people unemployed. That's why investors are not coming here. And if more investors came here, we could keep all these fine union people employed on a regular basis. That's what we need to do, attract more business to L.A. and make things fair for everyone, for landlords and for renters and for Grandma Lane. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carol Knapp?
Uh, I'm, she's going first and then I'll go after her. That's Grandma Lane, Maria Lane.
Is she Carol Knapp?
No, she's Maria Lane.
Is Carol, is Carol Knapp—
I think a lot of people know me here for years. I came to the United States when I married John R. Shermer. He passed away. Then, I got Johnny Roy Lane, which he passed away too. When they leave me so money, I love to cooperate with the city and with all the people that I can at that time. I got a son that most of the people here know, Posforito Rafael Gritzevsky Lopez. He's a hero in Vietnam. He's going to be operated April the fifth of this month of his heart. I got fourteen kids out there, seven are alive, and seven they got the best works because they all went to university. I am a lady, but I feel so hurt because I saved all my life so when I get older, which I am older now because I am eighty-six, I born January the fourteenth, nineteen twenty-five. I thought that I can die in my house, but I made the biggest mistake anyone, any lady that got a property, do not go and register because that is only against yourself. The Americans doing, don't work in the House Authority—
Department.
—Department. They send inspectors, Armenios, Filipinos, but they don't send, no, our people. My property, I invite you all to go and check it. It's the best. Nobody got the fence that I put, nobody got the apartments the way I do. I don't need nobody to come and tell me to repair my property. I am a lady. I don't live welfare, never. So, I want you two people to know that eighty-six years old, I'm supposed to be working today. You can check it if you want it—
Thank you, ma'am.
—in sag or after.
Thank you very much.
So, I can pay the city.
All right, we're going to go to the Valley now, uh, to Donna Pierman. Donna Pierman in the Valley.
Um, hello, CRA Council. Anyway, uh, Miriam Fogler couldn't make it today, but will be here tomorrow again. Last Tuesday, after an hour on mass transit, I came to, uh, to speak against the CRA. I put in five items. I put in, uh, just before the agenda was called, but you ran through it so fast, the clerk didn't even have to kind of, uh, you put it down, you denied my right to speak. You broke a speed record trying to go through the CRA, like you have doing as jam as many housing and beautification CRA programs as much as possible, as fast as possible. We are spending up to a billion or more on all these CRA projects. It makes the old fee waivers look like pennies spent. We are being accidentally radiated for Japan, and President Obama doesn't, does not want to help. He spends his whole speech saying rhetoric, nothing. We are in danger of terrorism, but people get down on the public employees, city, county, state, federal. Do they get any more than this, some private employees? We have real problems from NATO on a national level, who's using, uh, USA for their gain. We have radiation terrorism, Wisconsin CRA, he owns the city council. We have not slowed down on CRA. Let's make city employees, they might say, let's make city employees make concessions to pay for the CRA. Uh, please, Eric, uh, and, uh, Jan Perry, wake up and listen to John Walsh about the CRA, Miriam and myself. They are destroying the L.A. faster than you can put them in. Uh, we gotta stop going against the city employees. These are hard-working employees that do hard work and care, uh, care about their work. Uh, these are a lot of people who are educated and have spent a lot of years, um, weren't, um, being for the city of Los Angeles. Let's go against the CRA, that's the real problem, the CRA.
Willis Alexander in Van Nuys.
Good morning. Um, my name is Willie Alexander. I'm a member of Ironworkers Local 416. I've been an ironworker for thirty-four years. I'm here to show my support for the Farmers Field Project being considered in downtown Los Angeles. I haven't had a problem working in the last thirty-four years until this past year. Two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven have been really hard years for most of my union brothers. Um, the part-time work that we're, we're receiving right now is, is at best part-time. Um, this project, I mean, its magnitude would create tremendous amount of jobs for all the unions, and then it would continue to produce more jobs after the stadium would be built. I'm just here to show my support for that, and I thank you very much.
Rick Nightingale in the Valley.
Rick, good morning, Rick Nightingale. Everybody's talking about the stadium and all that down in, uh, Los Angeles. I believe you need one. No, don't get me wrong, but how about the City of Industry? That's where it should be. Why should we give up what we have around the city of Los Angeles right in there, like, take part of the convention center away that they use it every time there's some type of car show or otherwise? Look at the congestion you're going to have if you have it in the city of Los Angeles. It's going to be outrageous, just outrageous, just unbelievable how much traffic it will be. Let's go back, I just read in the paper, they want to put a bus route down Van Nuys Boulevard. What idiot thought of that? I cannot believe that you want to put a bus pass, and I'm, I'm sure it's going to be two lanes and that, and, and try to make it that, uh, you will only have one lane each way going down Van Nuys Boulevard for through traffic? You ought to count how many cars are going down there. You only have Sepulveda or Woodman because of the railroad tracks down there. You want to go from Burbank all the way to Plummer. That is crazy. You people are nuts. It's just unbelievable the things that you think of sitting in your little circles. I mean, what do you expect of this thing? And then you come with a CRA trying to pick up the tab for everything. I mean, I cannot believe it. Now we got it doing sidewalks, tree trimming, and so forth. What is the, the money that really is, is, uh, allocated for, being used for? What are you doing with all this money? I realize it's hard times right now, but get serious, what are you doing with it? And then the union comes and there's pickets down there that says, oh, you're taking all our rights away. Well, how about paying your own dues for your own retirement? I had to. I'm an IBEW worker. I was there for forty years, and I turned around and every dime that went into my pension, I came out of my pocket, not even the contractors.
Raul Bruseno in Van Nuys.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Raul Bruseno. I'm a member of local union 416 Ironworkers, and I lived in Los Angeles for over thirty years, and I just want to show my support also for the Farmers Field in downtown L.A. and look forward to the many jobs, um, that we definitely need in this, uh, struggling economy. Thank you.
All right, Carol Knapp.
Hello, my name is Carol Knapp. Um, I am with Maria Lane, Grandma Lane, and Bill Hui. Um, I retired from the school district, uh, for the purpose of going to law school purely for the purpose of suing the Los Angeles Housing Department, who has been stealing property for, uh, thirty years that I am aware of. Grandma Lane's only one of our four plaintiffs. By the way, she's in Ed Reyes's district. We have another, we have a ninety-six-year-old who lost her property, her one sole, uh, retirement income, because, uh, they, they send the notices to wherever they please, they post them on the property when there's no manager, and by the time they get the notices, it's not funny, Mr. Rosendahl, or you, it's not funny. Um, and the ninety-six-year-old lost her building. Uh, she complied with all orders, but because the notices didn't arrive on time, they took that to their advantage and stole her building. Not only that, she lost the building for foreclosure, and they refused to return her $10,000 that reconfiscated. Our other, uh, victim, a couple from India who had a six unit that they claimed was arbitrarily five units, even though there were different, uh, records, uh, some said six, some said five, and mysteriously, the bottom floor, uh, was lost, the plans for the lower floor was lost from the file. So, they were trying to get them to pay over $50,000 to relocate three tenants, even though they complied with all orders. Uh, by the way, building permits are outside the scope of the Housing Department. That's a building department, um, that's a building department, uh, authority. The third, the fourth couple, I mean, the fourth person, uh, lives in Hollywood. By the way, the Indian couple is in Jan Perry's district. Uh, the other person is, uh, an Indian.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Smile. Maria Lane?
I apologize.
Okay. Maria Lane is our next speaker. Maria Lane. Is Maria Lane present? Okay, that's Maria Lane. John Walsh? All right, thank you.
John Walsh blogging at Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org. We put up a brand-new post, extensive post over this past weekend. Come and read what's really happening in this city. I hope that the people who are financing the Wilshire Grant actually have the money. From what I understand, they don't even have, they have absolutely no money. It is, in fact, a wish list. We'll see. As you know, I formed an organization last Friday called Anybody But Zev For Mayor, which means we endorse, at this moment, Jan Perry for mayor. We endorse, even Bill Rosendahl, we endorse, and he's not even running for mayor. We, we endorse Kevin James for mayor. Why are we anybody but Zev? Now, you people out here, maybe you don't use the bus, but your parents, your elderly parents or your kids do. There was a vote last Thursday, seven to six, by one vote, to cut a half a million hours out of bus service. And the vote was, of the seven people who voted against and favor of cutting, every single one was white. Of the six people who voted against cutting the bus, only one was white. And the swing vote was the traitor, Zev Yaroslavski, voted to take your bus service, your parents, your aunts, your uncle's bus service, on top of hundreds of thousands of bus out, service hours cut before. He is a racist. His city is north of Venice and west of La Brea. That is his city, and he's going to run for our city? No! I'm telling you, HollywoodHighlands.org, anybody but Zev for mayor. Every single one up here, Wesson for mayor, Parks for mayor, and of course, Eric Garcetti, the only one who has a chance of winning, for mayor, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you.
Respectable city council members, uh, dear fellow Angelinos, I am a liberal Democrat, and, uh, I ran a, a campaign, a liberal campaign, you know, for District Eight of, uh, for city, uh, council, for, uh, seat of District Eight. Actually, uh, uh, I want to say that, uh, the slogan "American Revolution" is ousted with corrupt officials and incumbents. And I believe we should fight corruption in this city by reducing executive wages fifty percent and mandating, uh, blood testing for, for the subject of substance abuse in order to fire all substance abusers from the ranks of city workers. As a liberal Democrat, I propose city council members to raise taxes, homeowners' taxes against wealthy who make more than $60,000, uh, dollars a year on individual basis, and actually, uh, raise taxes against oil producers and gasoline selling corporations like Arco, Mobil, and Shell, Chevron, you know, all those, uh, cooperating with Ripoff American Motorist. And also, as a tax-and-spent liberal, I propose to distribute those increased revenues among pool workers who signed up for Section Eight housing. I demand, uh, expedited, uh, distribution of Section Eight housing vouchers, uh, in order to avoid more riots, more assassinations, and more federal, uh, uh, kind of, uh, prosecutions of corrupt officials. Because, you, I address city council members, if they don't conduct progressive politics, don't raise taxes and don't distribute, uh, housing vouchers, federal government will likely to indict and prosecute them on corruption charges for money laundering. And believe me, for poor juries, you know, wealthy people are always the guilty ones. So, we'll, we'll end up the same way as city bill council members, and that, we, along with the mayor. And I oppose, uh, construction of any new football stadium. Los Angeles has a life spot, and it's, uh—
Thank you. Dr. Williams. Dr. Clyde Williams. Is Dr. Williams present? Oh, there he is, okay.
Full House. Uh, Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, Northeast L.A. Tonight, we have a scoping meeting over in El Sereno for the State Route 710. However, the project area covers a hundred square miles. They don't know where they want to put it, kind of. They do, however, develop purposes and needs. Oh, it's to solve all the congestion, it's going to reduce all of the travel times, it's going to increase the number of vehicle miles traveled. But what is it? We don't know. Caltrans and MTA refuse to give a adequate base case project description, although they have a lot of documents that have already done studies of it, which they could have used, but they didn't. Why? Because they don't want to give a focal point for anyone to respond to. They learned their lesson over the last three years. You don't say anything, and then let the public be confused. Is this a case of transparency? Trust is gone. Transparency doesn't exist. So, what can we do? We can only fight it as we are provided through an administrative process. And we probably will start fighting it even as the scoping report is circulated, and it will go to MTA, and there will be a discretionary action. So, once MTA figures out what this Twilight Zone project is, maybe we can start focusing on what we really need. We do need to reduce congestion. We do need to improve bus service. We need more hours on bus service and fewer cars downtown. Why? Because we all suffer from the congestion coming from the San Gabriel Valley commuters to downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Noel Weiss. Following Noel Weiss will be, uh, Wilbur Bab. Is Wilbur Bab here? Noel Weiss, then Wilbur Bab.
Good morning. For all those listening on, uh, Channel 35 in the council, again, I want to repeat the three magic words that we have yet to hear uttered by anybody on the city council. There we go, fraud, waste, and abuse. That's right. Janice Han's got it, as usual. Um, very, it really is critically important. I think what we're talking about is honestly, the need for a whistleblower protection law. That's what I want to advocate for going forward. But in addition, um, on the subject of fraud, waste, and abuse, in terms of the city attorney's office, I'm wondering, if he's complaining about money, why is it, for example, the last Friday, we had five city attorneys down here, four or five, basically, um, asking, uh, for additional budget dollars? Um, the Lincoln Place negotiations, there were always three city attorneys, my own experience litigating with the city attorney. Incredible waste with regard to that effort. I think going forward, we got to give serious consideration before you start raising their budget. And more importantly, this ACE program, um, administrative, uh, um, administrative enforcement, I forget what the C is, um, but administrative code enforcement. Basically, what that represents is another attempt to put more power into the hands of somebody who so far to date has, has demonstrated a tendency to criminalize, um, political differences. Not a— Not a good idea, plus there are more efficient ways, basically, to accomplish it. Lastly, I think in terms of the City Attorney's Office, we've got to start looking at an alternative, which is having the district attorney, basically prosecute misdemeanors. And I would ask the budget and finance people to begin to look into whether or not there's a viable alternative to have the district attorney, because the district attorney does prosecute misdemeanors for most of the cities in this district. So with that said, one final thing, we're coming up on the anniversary of the relocation fees. Mr. Weisar's magic question, hopefully, we will see it answered this time around, like he promised. What is the affordable housing policy, or what is the housing policy of the city of LA? That's really important. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the City Council. My name is Wilbur Bab, manager for Public Affairs, Metro Operations. I'm here to discuss the, or advise you of the remaining scoping meetings as it relates to Route 710. This process has involved an education and public involvement program, and that soliciting input in regard to regional and community-based solutions. Our current series in this program, Series Three Scoping, going for the record, consists of eight public scoping meetings that are taking place throughout the region, and four scoping meetings are remaining, with two of which are taking place tonight, or I should say, two of which are taking place in the city of LA. One is tonight in El Sereno, the second is April 6 in Highland Park. I have additional information for you. If you're interested in details, you can go to our website, metro.net/710conversations. And I also have flyers that I would like to leave with you, that has remaining details of our scoping meetings. Thank you.
Was that one of the, was Sergeant come over to take the gentleman's documents?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. That marks the end of our public comment cards. And before we go on, I'd like to acknowledge the young women who are here in the room with us, the chamber, from the program called Schoolhouse to White House Leadership. And it's a program sponsored by the Legacy Ladies Incorporated. These are students from Crenshaw High and Washington Prep High School. And if they just raise their hands so we know where they are, kind of step forward so you can be... Maybe if we could put them on camera for a second. There they are. Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Yes, Mr. Parks, you want to take item nine out of order?
Yes, we'd like to move item nine, and also ask that CF #091552 be received and filed as part of that file.
All right. There's no speaker in the queue on that item. Madam Clerk, would you please open the roll on that item? Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Next item, forthwith on nine. Yes, forthwith on nine. Madam Clerk, next item.
Madam President, do you wish to take item 16 from last Friday's meeting? Do we consider it per the request of Mr. Rosendahl?
If there's a need to do it at this time, we can go, if there's no need to do it at this time, we can go in order.
Just want to reconsider 16.
Okay.
From last Friday.
Okay. Motion to reconsider item 16. Open the...
It's the motion grant.
Madam Clerk, can you please explain what it is? Mr. City Attorney, if you can do that. All right, the clerk needs to have the description of the item from Friday's agenda before her, before we can read that into the record, so that our members know exactly what it is we're voting on. So why don't we delay that until they get the description before them, and then we'll go on to the next item?
A call special by Councilmember Perry.
Recognize the Chair of our Planning and Land Use Management Committee, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I'd like to ask the staff, planning staff and the City Attorney staff that worked on this project to come to the center table. What I'd like to do is speak to the context of this project, speak to the process, and how we got here. And as they are sitting themselves up at the table, one of the key factors here is the amount of time spent working on this project. I'd like to ask the staff, when did this process begin? Can you give me some ballpark figures of how many meetings you've had on this issue? With stakeholders, with the city family? And give us a perspective on how much time was spent on this particular project, a number of meetings?
Thank you, Councilmember. Kevin Keller, City Planning, I'm joined with Shawna Bonson from City Planning and Laura Catigan from the City Attorney's Office. And I believe we're responding to both items one and 10 on this. They are related. This is the Wilshire Grand Development Project. The council did approve the project at a prior meeting. Today, in front of the council, is the development agreement for the project, the transfer of floor area for the project, and also the proposed supplemental use district for signage. Planning staff has been working on this project since July 2009.
July 2009.
July 2009. We issued our notice of preparation on the environmental in July 2009. We held our public scoping meeting also in July 2009. We recirculated the notice of preparation, had a second public scoping meeting in November 2009. So that is when we got our initial public input. Following that, planning staff prepared a draft environmental impact report that was circulated for comments the summer of 2010, between July and August 2010. There was also briefings at neighborhood councils, the Central City Association, and accumulating in a public hearing the department held in November of 2010. The planning staff...
So the first public hearing was November?
Correct.
2010.
First public hearing, and full public hearing on this case, correct.
Can you bring the microphone closer to you so you can hear it better?
Yes. Thank you. Yeah, the first public hearing on this was November 2010 at the city staff level. Following that hearing, planning prepared an initial recommendation report, which was presented to our City Planning Commission at its December 2010 meeting. The Planning Commission did recommend approval with conditions, and we can go into that if that's what the council would like us to go into. That was then sent to the Planning and Land Use Management Committee at two meetings, an initial meeting February 22, 2011, and a second meeting March 1, 2011. The item, the project was in front of council on March 9, I believe, for its approvals, and we're returning today with the three items I mentioned, the development agreement, the transfer of floor area, and the proposed supplemental use district for signage. So it's been an iterative process. On top of that, staff began working on the development agreement and on the supplemental use district for signage back in July 2009, developing alternatives, mitigations through the environmental process, really looking at the signage from every angle, in terms of developing feasible mitigations that could be implemented as part of this project.
So approximately a year and more or less 10 months?
Correct.
We've had it out in the public, we've had several venues by which people can respond. We folded in those responses, those reactions, to the different issues that pertain to this project.
That's correct.
Now, when we speak to the, and maybe I could address the City Attorney on this, we have a very delicate sign use district ordinance, and the parameters here we're working on that have been defined by the courts. I want to make sure that what we have in front of us does not jeopardize or put us in a place where the fragility of this sign ordinance and how we have worked with the courts is not in any way being impacted by this project. Can you speak to that, please?
This is Laura Catigan, Deputy City Attorney. I actually was the attorney involved in the development agreement, not the sign district. The attorneys working on the sign district could have best answered that question, but I know that they have been involved in this process, and it's a new ordinance that they have approved.
But Kevin Keller, City Planning. Planning cannot respond to the question as you phrase it legal, but I do want to go on the record saying, the sign district as proposed does meet our current zoning code requirements. Certainly, we need to be very cautious and careful when adopting a new sign district, but our current zoning code does require a minimum block size of one block, and does would permit off-site signage. There are proposals, working through the system, to amend that, those have not yet been adopted, so the project is consistent with the current regulations. That being said, I do want to hand it back to the City Attorney to respond to any questions about legality.
Now, I understand that attorney's not here. If we can get someone to the table that can speak to it, I want to fold into this process, this current discussion for my colleagues to hear how careful we've been in making sure we do not put ourselves in a delicate place where we could regret our vote. I want to make sure that we understand that we've been following this in a management very methodical, and assuring that we maintain what we've achieved up to this point intact. Last question, when it comes to the planning staff's recommendation, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the planning staff put forth a report that went to the commission, it was the commission who made changes for the reasons they had, came back to committee, and committee, we essentially reaffirmed the planning staff's report, and essentially forwarded to this body a recommendation that does hold intact the technical expertise and recommendations from the planning staff, but deviated from the planning commission's subjectivity as to what they see as a project they would like to support.
Yeah, thank you. Kevin Keller, City Planning, again. That's correct. The initial planning recommendation from staff was to include an architectural lighting component on this project. The Planning Commission did not vote to endorse that, so the project, as moved in front of council, did not have architectural lighting. At the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, architectural lighting being that portion of the project above 150 feet that would have LED technology that could provide images, patterns, but not commercial messaging and signs. The Planning and Land Use Management Committee did recommend the inclusion, or the re-inclusion, of the architectural lighting. The planning and land, the other significant change was the Planning and Land Use Management Committee also increased the overall signage at the lower levels as well. So for that reason, the ordinance in front of the council today is not consistent with the City Planning Commission's recommendation. That being said, the council can still move forward and adopt it with a 10 vote.
And I want to highlight that point. The committee does not endorse the type of signage where it makes the whole building a billboard. It's been very well-defined, it's been very well-limited. The remaining space that is called the third tier, the higher area of the building, is there for art.
Correct.
Graphics, not commercial, so it's not a billboard. So I want to make very clear what I've been reading in the press, I think it's a little misleading, it is not a billboard, it is art, and I believe it adds more culture, hopefully a sense of balance, and I believe I'm very comfortable with that. And Mr. Fong, my last question before I yield the microphone is, I want to make sure that what we've been through, and one of my colleagues is here, that was being presented, does not jeopardize the delicate state of our sign ordinance as dictated by the judge and the courts.
Ken Fong, City Attorney's Office. All along, we've been advising the council through confidential memos on various legal issues, so you can refer to some of those. And we have been working closely with planning and with the council office on the project in light of past sign litigation and other things that we've learned. So we've bolstered this to the best of our ability and the best of planning's ability. And also, keep in mind that there has been a motion to form a larger sign district that would eventually include other parcels as well. So that's part of the analysis.
Thank you. In conclusion, colleagues, I just want to reaffirm that in a year and 10 months or so, we've had public discussion at several venues, it's been through the commission, been the committee, been very careful with the courts, very careful with our attorneys in dealing the sign use district. The element that seems to be most controversial is an artistic element, it's not a commercial one, so I want to put that on the table, and I urge an i-vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Your next speaker is Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. So to reiterate, we have three items before us today, the development agreement, the transfer of floor area rights, and the Seventh and Figueroa sign district. And I realize that my colleagues are familiar with this project, as this is the third time this development has come before this body. This is a groundbreaking project, it's the first time in 22 years there's been a high-rise building constructed in downtown Los Angeles. Now, as I said this morning in an earlier interview, downtown is like no other place in the city of Los Angeles. We have a significant concentration of cultural assets, we have a burgeoning and growing sports and entertainment corridor, housing at all income levels in close proximity to each other. The signage that may be appropriate in downtown is not necessarily appropriate in other areas. Signage is an important part of downtown's architectural context and contributes to the city's skyline, and this particular proposed district provides a direct linkage to the convention center and creates that visual urban connection. The signage being proposed for this project is a new technology that has not been previously seen in the city of Los Angeles. The technology fully integrates into the curtain wall of the project. While the developers are proposing is not a billboard, and it is not standard signage that has been seen in our city to date. Now, I also want to say thank you to Kevin Keller and Shawna Boston, Shawna Boston from City Planning. And I also want to thank Michael Basstrom of the City Attorney's Office. We have an ordinance establishing the Seventh and Figueroa sign district before council today, and the City Attorney's Office has been tremendous in walking us through this process, step by step by step. My office has worked cooperatively with the Office of the City Attorney and with the Department of City Planning on this ordinance, and has implemented all of the suggestions from both the City Attorney and the Planning Department at every step. So today, I introduce two technical amending motions, both of which reflect input and suggestions that we embraced from the City Attorney and from the Department of City Planning. One motion includes supplemental findings in support of adopting the sign district. The other motion includes the revised ordinance, which establishes project-building thresholds before allowing signage, ensuring that sign rights are only provided when a truly iconic project is developed. The ordinance before council today fully complies with the existing sign ordinance, which does allow sign districts to be established on one block. Additionally, the city has begun work on the proposed Figueroa Corridor sign district, which will link the Los Angeles Sports and Entertainment District to the Wilshire Grand redevelopment eventually. The Figueroa Corridor sign district under study will result in a cohesive planning effort addressing signage throughout the corridor, resulting in a comprehensive district with a unified character. The Figueroa Corridor is one of the most unique and dynamic destinations in the city, and additional urban infill projects such as the Wilshire Grand are very necessary to ensure the continued vitality of the, not only the area, but for the city, so that we have the adequate number of hotel rooms to continue to increase our tourism numbers. So Wilshire Grand is key to our redevelopment. As I've said before, the hotel was small and substandard and functionally obsolete. But what's even more noteworthy is that the city still lacks the requisite number of four-star hotel rooms to support our convention center bookings and the activities. So a redeveloped hotel will increase that number of rooms and help attract even more conventions to increase our city revenue. Now, the sign district will be of a benefit to the city as a whole, because the sign district requires that billboard signs must be removed from the south and southeast Los Angeles, Central City, the Westlake Community Plan areas, before any off-site signs may be installed. And specifically, the sign district provides for two square feet of scrolling digital displays and three square feet of integrated digital displays for every square foot of billboard removed. The development agreement for the Wilshire Grand provides $74 million in benefits, including the creation of 7,300 jobs... the creation of 7,300 jobs in construction, 9,700 new permanent jobs. The other thing that is extremely noteworthy is the redevelopment of this hotel will provide a host of meaningful benefits to the city of Los Angeles through a significant contribution to the general fund through new taxes and multiple public infrastructure improvements. This redevelopment will positively impact our general fund by creating $22 million a year in new revenue beginning in 2015. The Wilshire Grand redevelopment will purchase a maximum of $1.4 million square foot air rights from the convention center. This will allow the development increased floor area and generate $7.4 million in public benefit payment to the city that can be used in the area surrounding the development to mitigate impacts associated with increased density. Now, this is a unique project because it complies with planning principles and smart growth. It is a catalytic project because it will continue to contribute to the growth of our region, and it will increase tourism and bring much-needed jobs. Once completed, this project is projected to create a $1.5 billion annual revenue for the city. Approval of this project will be a significant step in the right direction for our city's economic future. And I ask, when we're done with the discussion today and the questions, I'll speak one more time about the amending motions and then circle back and ask you again for your i-vote as amended. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. So we move to go to public comment. We actually only have Mr. Labanz on the queue as well, but I know there's a lot of public comment. Mr. Labanz, do you want to wait till after?
Public comment first.
All right. Let's go ahead, and our first speaker on this is, we're going to take, I think, both of these together. I know some folks have cards on one and some have on 10. James Thomas is our first speaker. After that is Hillary Norton.
Good morning, sir.
Thank you. The economic circumstance, I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry.
I already stated his name, Mr. [inaudible].
He stated my name, but again, I'll state it. I'm Jim Thomas. I'm CEO of Thomas Properties Group. The economic circumstances that we find ourselves in today are very dryer. We have a lot of unemployment. We have people who are losing their homes. The city has a very, very large deficit, and we desperately need things to turn this around. And part of the solution to this problem, I believe, is the development of the downtown. And we're very proud with Korean Airlines to be presenting the Grand Wilshire project, which is a billion, over a billion-dollar project consisting of a major hotel and office As many of you know, downtown has been a place where our firm has been involved for over 30 years. We have built the majority of the downtown projects, starting with what's now known as U.S. Bank, which we still call Library Square, Wells Fargo Center, Gas Tower, and so on. So we see this project as a continuation of the legacy that we have started here and the contribution that we have made to the skyline of downtown Los Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. We have to keep it, unfortunately, as even as possible. The two minutes on the timer there per speaker, so I'm going to have to move to our next speaker. My apologies.
I'm done.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Perfect timing, then.
Can I just say, I urge everyone to vote in favor of the project.
Thank you for that clarifying statement. Hillary Norton is our next speaker. After that will be John Walsh, then David Kirsch.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Hillary Norton, and I'm the executive director of FAST, fixing Angelenos stuck in traffic. And a lot has been said about the benefits of the Wilshire Grand redevelopment project, but not enough has been said about what this project is going to do for transportation in downtown. This is precisely the kind of project we should be highlighting when we go to Washington, D.C., and talk about the America Fast Forward Plan, because this is exactly the kind of permanent job leverage that happens when you are built by a rail station like Seventh and Figueroa. Not only will the regional connector end here, not only is Thomas Property Group and Hanjin investing in mobility hubs, in buses, in improvements to Caltrans and the highways, this is precisely the kind of project that the elected officials were asking for when they came out to Los Angeles and said, "We love the construction jobs. We love what we're going to do to invest in transportation, but what will be the leverage, permanent jobs that happen after?" This kind of billion-dollar investment above transportation is exactly the kind of thing we should be pointing to over and over again that can be replicated throughout our region when we invest in sound public transportation and we get responsible private investors to work on public-private partnerships, to move our city, to employ our city, and be the best that Los Angeles has to offer. And for that, FAST urges an i-vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Walsh is our next speaker. After that is David Kirsch. After Mr. Kirsch will be Wayland Spencer. Good morning, sir.
John Walsh, good morning. John Walsh blogging at Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-I-S dot org. Over 1 million successful server requests a year. If you're watching this and you have small children in the room, I would ask the people who are watching this to remove the small children for what I'm about to say. Are they gone? Good. There is no Santa Claus, and there is no Easter Bunny. What we hear is Santa Claus here. There is no project. Korean money is Japanese money. The upheaval in Japan is unlike anything that has happened in the history of the world. And you're telling me somebody's walking around with a billion dollars to invest in downtown L.A. when there is no possi, when they don't have a stadium, when you have crime? No, no. This is about the development, the entitlement game. Do you know what entitlements are? That's what we're in now. And part of this entitlements, they're worth tens of millions of dollars to the developer. Developers have no money. Banks have money. And the banks aren't going to be lending money, and incidentally, most of the banks will be lending money to the government of, in Korea, to the government of Japan. So you can sit up here like Kabuki and do your act and pretend there's a billion dollars and bring all these labor people, and I've been doing this so many times in projects that disappear. You remember the Bass Brothers going to build a project in Hollywood? It never happened. It won't happen. It can't happen. But this is an advertisement, a promotion, to see if you can get developer, you can get not developers but investors. They're not stupid. I'm sorry. I'm the Grinch that stole Christmas, because there is no Christmas and there will be no project. HollywoodHighlands.com.org.
Thank you. David Kirsch is our next speaker. After Mr. Kirsch is Wayland Spencer and Thomas Robles. Good morning.
Good morning. David Kirsch with the Carpenter's Contractors Cooperation Committee. I'm here to restate our strong support for this project. There's one word: jobs. I mean, the number of jobs that this project is going to create is incredible. There are, as all the other construction trades, I mean, our members are suffering. The unemployment rate is at record numbers, and this project is going to bring a lot of hope to a lot of members in our community. These are good-paying jobs with health care, with benefits, apprenticeship. As Councilmember Rayo has mentioned, the project has been thoroughly vetted, and it's time for all of you to support this project. It's going to put a lot of people back to work, and we urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kirsch. Wayland Spencer is our next speaker. After Mr. Spencer will be Thomas Robles, Sr., and then Jean Hale.
Good morning. My name is Wayland Spencer. I'm with Local 416, Reinforced Iron Workers, and I support the Wilshire Grand redevelopment project, which will create 7,000 jobs for myself and my other union brothers that are here at this meeting today. And I hope that you approve the signage for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thomas Robles, Sr., then Jean Hale and Grace Yu. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Tom Robles. I'm with the Local 416 Reinforced Iron Workers. I'm here today to ask for a yes vote on Wilshire Grand. With this comes jobs. With this come tourists. With this comes money back to the city, which we all need. And after this thing is built, there's going to be thousands of jobs for L.A. County. Thank you.
Thank you. Jean Hale is our next speaker. After that is Grace Yu and Marilena Duraso.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm chairman of the great L.A. African-American Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to say that we support this project. The reason we support this project is because we believe that this will help stimulate the decimated workforce of African-Americans in this city. Also, we believe that this will create more than 200 opportunities for our members, which in turn will enable them to hire more people. This project, combined with Expo 2 and the proposed stadium, is a game changer for the African-American community, and we fully support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Grace Yu is our next speaker. After that is Marilena Duraso and Kevin Bass. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Grace Yu, and I'm executive director at the Korean-American Coalition. And we, of course, are extremely proud to be supporting the Wilshire Grand development. And as someone who just was so delighted by what Councilmember Perry shared this morning about the vibrance of the downtown, the L.A. Live, and just what we are planning for Wilshire and Figueroa is just exciting. And I know that the council members here would like for this project to proceed, so thank you, and just wanted you to know that the Korean-American community is fully supportive of this development as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. Marilena Duraso, and then Kevin Bass and Kevin Norton will follow. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm here to urge support of this project going forward. The L.A. Federation of Labor represents thousands of workers in the county of Los Angeles that will be impacted by this. And I'd like all the supporters, the working people, to stand up who are here in support of this project. You know, on Saturday, on Saturday, close to 20,000 workers marched in Los Angeles, and we took to the streets because what we need is respect for workers. We're supporting ourselves. We're solidarity with each other. We're also supporting workers all across the country. And today, we have an example for the rest of the country to see collective bargaining works. For these employers, for this developer, to sit across the table with cooks and housekeepers and painters and ironworkers and electricians all together saying, "Yes, we can make it work for Los Angeles. We want to create good jobs. We're committed to creating good jobs. We're going to put local Angelenos back to work." Korean Air has negotiated a fair agreement with the hotel staff that protects housekeepers and cooks and all of hospitality. They signed a project labor agreement with the building trades. This is a model, and there are so few models in Los Angeles, so few models across the country. We ask you to not only support it, but to hold it up as an example that we want all employers and all developers to follow. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Duraso. Our next speaker is Kevin Bass. After Kevin Bass is Kevin Norton, and after Kevin Norton is Tommy Farvai.
Good morning, council. My name is Kevin Bass with Painters and Allied Trades, and I'm here to urge you to support this project. There's a lot of other reasons, other than jobs in this case. We haven't had a project like this in the city for over 20 years. This is a project that would, with the synergy that we're going to have with Farmers Field that we also support, is unprecedented in this city. The developers worked with the city attorney to get this done, and, you know, we just want everyone to stop waiting and get this to move forward. There'll be 7,000 jobs created permanently for this and a couple of times that for the construction of this project. Many of the people that you just saw standing were from my union, and we just support this and want it to happen as soon as possible. So again, I strongly urge you to support this project. Thank you.
Good morning. Kevin Norton, IBW Local 11. I just spoke to Santa Claus and the Easter Bunny, and they both support this project. The tooth fairy is on the fence. We have catastrophic unemployment in the construction industry, which the reason is so many people can show up today is they don't have a job. This would be an excellent project. The developers labored over two years with all the different city departments to make sure, to study lighting levels, mitigation, speed of transition, angles and spacing. Over 20 mitigation measures, including brightness limitations and restrictions on freeway-facing signage are included in the EIR. And we, again, this is a fully funded project. There aren't a lot of projects out there for building trades workers. It's an excellent project for downtown, and we fully encourage your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, full-body council. My name is Tommy Farvai with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 11. I just strongly urge your support for this Grand Marshall project in Wilshire, Wilshire District. But this means a lot of, putting a lot of apprentices and entry level, you know, to work. Our apprenticeship program is vital. It's our lifeblood, you know, to, you know, to our membership and put a lot of our workers to work. Let's see this project move forward, and I urge for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ann Williams. Our next speakers are Ann Williams, Rosa Rivera, and Barbara Brady. Those are the next three speakers. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Ann Williams with the Central City Association. On behalf of CCA's 400 members, I want to express our strong support for the Wilshire Grand redevelopment project's proposed sign district, which is an integral piece of the overall development plan. This city has so much to gain from the investment of over a billion dollars of private money, particularly during this lasting economic downturn, but today, we're going to focus on signage, so I won't repeat our support for the project's massive economic impact. Downtown Los Angeles has matured a lot in the past decade of its renaissance, and it increasingly embraces its character as a true urban core. What it's fast becoming is a real downtown with the density and intensity of use and the dynamic visual excitement that goes along with that status. If you look at other cities around the country and the world, compared to other major cities, our downtown skyline is very modest and understated, and it's really not in keeping with L.A.'s status as the entertainment and creative capital of the world. The Wilshire Grand redevelopment is consistent with a modern vision of what a downtown should look like in the 21st century. So while we certainly agree that this type of project isn't appropriate in many parts of our city, we think that bold lighting is an integral piece of our urban fabric, and it's a great fit for downtown. We're excited about kicking off the next chapter in downtown L.A.'s ongoing evolution, and the Wilshire Grand redevelopment project is nothing short of a game changer. So thank you, and we hope you will move this project forward today.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, Rosa Rivera. Then Barbara Brady and James Elmandorf are our next two. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Rosa Rivera. 21 years room attendant at the Wilshire Grand Hotel. 35 years at the hotel industry by room attendant. We are very special today. Why we are very special? Because we are the employers at the Wilshire Grand. The cooks, the housekeepers, the laundry, the The cooks, the housekeepers, the laundry, the barman's, all who are working on the hotel, we feel so proud to support this project. Why? We support this project because we have a very, very, very good employer who share with us that we have. We make an arrangement with us to provide the people who wants to back to work, they're going to get their jobs back with the seniority, the salaries, the benefits and all of that who are included. For the people who doesn't want to return to work because they are thinking on retire, we have a special package and they can take something, some money and they can take a home and they can have on the retire. That's why we are very proud to be special because we are Wilshire Grand employers and we are support our employers because I think there is not many employers like that who provide the employees that thing. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Barbara Brady is our next speaker. After that will be James Elmandorf and after that will be Ron Miller. Good morning.
Thank you, President Garcetti and Councilmembers. My name is Barbara Brady, Westwood South and the Coalition to Ban Billboard Blight. I'm here to address one small aspect of this project that has not received any discussion and that I'm sure most of the supporters of this project are completely unaware of. In medicine and public health, we seek to improve and protect the health of individuals in the community. Our actions are guided by the commitment to do no harm. Government has a similar purpose to protect the public safety, yet there is one aspect of the Wilshire Grand proposed sign district that is particularly and especially troubling, and that is the permission to install electronic off-site signage on the Francisco side of the project that faces the Harbor Freeway 110 traffic. In this, you have abdicated your responsibility to protect our safety from these signs that are designed to catch the attention of all who pass. On page 18 of the Development Agreement, it specifically exempts the signs from hazard determination review procedures in Code Section 14.4.5. This is extremely troubling. The DOT has not been allowed to do its job. It endangers the health and safety of every person on that freeway, from highway workers to passengers to school bus riders. We deserve to have a determination. The Federal Highway Traffic Safety Commission is doing a study now that will determine electronic sign safety and this city should grant no special permission to allow such signage until those studies are done. This endangers the city's liability. It endangers drivers and pedestrians. These are commercial billboards and a small aspect. I implore you to not approve the Francisco signage that faces the 110 as you review this project. The protection of public safety should not be a negotiable betterment, it should be a given. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brady. Appreciate your comments today. James Elmandorf is our next speaker, then Ron Miller will follow and then Laura Salagi.
Good morning, Councilmembers. My name is James Elmandorf with the Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here speaking as well on behalf of Tom Walsh, President of Unite Here Local 11, who couldn't be here today. Both L.A. and Local 11 are strong supporters of this project, both because we recognize the importance of tourism in our economy. It's the number one employer in Southern California, generates a huge number of jobs and a tremendous amount of revenue, and we need it to grow. And this project is essential to helping tourism grow in our city. But we're also supporters because we know this employer has stepped up to do not just the right thing, but really be a model employer. They have committed not only to bring back all of the hotel workers when this hotel reopens, but also to ensure that while it is closed, the hotel workers will continue to have health insurance for the period of time when it is closed. I want to really contrast this to what some other employers in the city do. I'll look particularly to the example of the Bel Air across town where they are refusing to even bring back workers to this hotel, to their hotel when it reopens. This is a model employer. This is an employer who's committed to good jobs and a good tourism economy and we absolutely support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elmandorf. Ron Miller is our next speaker, then Laura Salagi and Dennis Hathaway. Mr. Miller? You want to come? You're passing? Okay. All right, Laura Salagi, if you'd like to come forward, and then Dennis Hathaway and Jan Book. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Laura Salagi and I represent the Venice Community Coalition and I am a union member, UTLA retired. My father was a labor lawyer. I'm very glad that there will be union jobs coming here. However, I have a lot of questions about the signage. The Plum Committee has chosen to ignore the building department's many months-long consideration of this project and also has ignored the planning commission. The planning commission, I mean, the signage is about five times more currently, excuse me, everybody. Okay, I don't have everybody's attention, but, okay, the signage is about five times more than the planning department recommended. And these changes occurred at the Plum Committee hearing. Before that, everyone was in accord and then suddenly things changed to increase the signage exponentially. And I wonder why we have a planning department and why we have a planning commission if they are not listened to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salagi. Our next speaker is Dennis Hathaway and then Jan Book. Good morning.
Good morning, Councilmembers. I'm Dennis Hathaway, President of the Coalition to Ban Billboard Blight. I just wanted to make it clear that me personally and members of our organization do not oppose this project in any way. In fact, we are supportive of downtown projects that bring jobs and revenue to the city. My comments are only related to the sign district and the signage program. I was very disappointed this morning to hear disinformation put out about the approval process. I have read all the documents in this case. I've read the recommendation reports. I've been to the City Planning Commission hearing. I've been to the Plum Committee hearings. The City Planning Commission recommended approximately 6,000 square feet of electronic signage on the podium of the building. The City Planning Commission approved that. That was appealed by the developer. The Plum Committee approved that appeal, increasing the amount of that signage to almost 30,000 square feet. And restored signage along the Francisco Street frontage that is visible from the 110 freeway, as another speaker said. So as far as the signage on the towers, it's being stated that this is kind of some decorative signage. It should be clear that what is driving this kind of technology, turning the facades of entire buildings into signs, is not the display of butterflies and flowers. It is marketing and advertising. While it's not allowed at this moment, this signage will be, I can almost guarantee that there will be developed, property owners seeking entitlement to display logos and messages on this signage. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good morning, Jan. After that will be Mitch Menzer and Hamid Bedad. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jan Book and I live in Villarreal, Del Rey. And from my home, I can see at least five digital billboards from Lincoln and Washington, downtown towards Olympic and Union, and even the US Bank Library Tower. Whether at day or at night, each time the image of a digital billboard shifts to a new image, I see it. Stop! Look at me! Yes, each time a digital image shifts, the quiet, serene city landscape jolts the citizens of LA into an alert mode. Stop! Look at me! People go to LA Live for excitement and digital billboards add to that excitement. But to have a constant excitement all the time is not healthy for our citizen. By the way, I do not oppose the redevelopment of Los Angeles. I'm speaking only of the digital billboards, please. Because I'm telling you, "Stop! Look at me!" is not something you constantly want to be looking at, especially at night. Why do people go to the Griffith Park Observatory? They want to see the beauty of our city, the serenity of our city, and suddenly over here, a digital signs changes the image of, "Stop! Look at me!" The digital billboards do not create the jobs. The digital billboards do not solve the unemployment problem in the city. The digital billboards will not per se increase tourism. Please, "Stop! Look at me!" needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mitch Menzer and then Hamid Bedad and Russell Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President and honorable Councilmembers. I'm Mitch Menzer of the Paul Hastings Law Firm, counsel to the project applicant Hanjin International Corporation. And I'd like to start by addressing the points made by Ms. Brady. And I want to emphasize that this sign district has been extensively studied in every aspect, including the issues that she's concerned about and rightfully concerned about. But this project, through the environmental impact report, through the department's staff work, contains the most carefully analyzed and controlled sign district with numerous controls as to operating hours, brightness, the manner in which images can be changed, the placement, and there's particular focus on Francisco, specifically with respect to issues involving possible freeway exposure. And the exposure to the freeway is extremely limited because of the number of large buildings that stand between the project and the freeway. And furthermore, I do want to emphasize that this project in the sign district remains subject to Caltrans approval with respect to those very issues. So the city is very well protected in that respect. I also want to emphasize that the city attorney and the staff did terrific work in addressing the concern raised by Mr. Reyes as to how this project may possibly affect the Ninth Circuit's decision in the Worldwide Rush case. And I can assure you that the city attorney's office, the staff in Council District Nine have done an excellent job in ensuring that this project will fall squarely within the protections that are provided by the Worldwide Rush case and that this project meets all of the standards in that case in order to uphold the city's citywide ban on off-site signing, signage, rather. You have before you detailed supplemental findings that support all of the necessary requirements to meet Worldwide Rush and we urge you to adopt the supplemental findings and to approve this sign district. Thank you.
Thank you. Hamid Bedad and then Russell Brown and then Richard Slosson. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President and honorable Councilmembers. My name is Hamid Bedad. I'm the president of Central City Development Group, 1010 Wilshire, Los Angeles, California. I'm here also to, on behalf of the Amidi conglomerate, which consists of over 40 entities throughout the world, where domestic, international operation, based in Redwood City, California. We have over 1,500 employees in seven European countries. We provide drinking water, we manufacture plastic, we have real estate, and we have startup companies and high-tech and on and on and on. We're, most importantly in this case, the closest, the owner of closest residential high-rise to this project, which is 1010 Wilshire across the freeway. If you remember, it's the Grand Wilshire, it's the Whitbush Building, it's 110 Freeway and 1010 Wilshire. We're also recently obtained an entitlement for 376 units of additional live work across the street. We have been reviewing the signage and the lighting for this project and although we are against the ugly billboards throughout the city, but we're extremely in support of this particular project because we believe that the elegantly designed lighting and signage for this building will be a complement to the urban lifestyle that is the main reason our business exists in downtown LA. So we are here to strongly support the project as the closest residential building to the site. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Russell Brown is next. After that is Richard Slosson and Robbie Hunter.
Russell Brown, Executive Director of the Historic Downtown Business Improvement District and also with the Downtown LA Network Council Planning and Transportation Committee and a seven-year resident of downtown. We have gone through outreach meetings with the developer and community stakeholders for almost two years on this project. We're enthusiastically in support of the catalytic project which will connect not only the transportation station at Metro and Seventh with the Convention Center and the Staples Center. There is no more appropriate site than this site for the T-FAR and to build density literally on the intersection where the gold line, the blue line, the expo line, the red line, the purple line and close by to the downtown streetcar. We approved the signage, especially the upper floor architectural lighting with no commercial uses, and it's very appropriate to have lighting and signage down on the ground floor. I was fortunate enough last night to attend a concert at the Staples Center. As I walked back from the Staples Center to Seventh and Metro, I was sort of surprised how dark and empty and poorly landscaped the connection was. This will connect that corner of the Wilshire Grand to the Staples Center and the Convention Center and also will be part of the Figueroa Corridor streetscape program. There's also a large public benefit for the Seventh Street Corridor streetscape, which will connect downtown's new restaurant row all the way to Historic Broadway. So we urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Richard Slosson and Robbie Hunter and Tracy Raftor. Good morning.
Good morning, Council President and Councilmembers. I'm Richard Slosson, Executive Secretary of the LA and Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council until Thursday. And I am here representing 140,000 craft workers and their families that live and work and raise their families throughout this area. We've talked about Santa Claus, we've talked about the Easter Bunny, but I can tell you here today that working people in the city of Los Angeles support this project. This project means jobs for people, real people, that are out there struggling every day to try to come up with the funds to keep their family housed, clothed, put their kids through school and all those necessary things that are required for a family life here. I want to comment on our relationship over the years with, first McQuire Thomas and then Thomas Properties with Jim Thomas. There are many developers that we've dealt with over the years and over 20 years that I've been with the Building and Construction Trades Council, but I can tell you there are none better in this city than Jim Thomas and Thomas Properties. They have a reputation for living up to the commitment environmentally and permit-wise for all of the requirements on these projects that are going to be built in the city of Los Angeles. They have done the same here. They have spent the last two years living up to the commitment that they make as a developer to make this city move forward and the economy to expand. This project will be a boon for the city. The lighting that is a part of this project will make it possible for possibly the Great Ball at New Year's Eve to lower in the city of Los Angeles rather than New York City. You know what an economic boom Times Square is as a tourist attraction. All of the city of Los Angeles with LA Live and this project are moving in that direction and we need the jobs. And I would like all of the construction people that are here today that are unemployed to stand up for a moment so that you can see who's going to work on this project, hopefully by the end of this year if all of the permits are approved. Thank you very much.
And I know this is not the goodbye yet, even though Thursday is your day, but thank you for all your leadership over the years as well. Robbie Hunter is our next speaker.
Good morning. This project has worked for Hanjin and Thomas Properties, have worked for over two years with the city planning department. I've done a full environmental, the building trades do not support projects that have not done full environmental reports. We live in this city too. We represent 140,000 workers. What we have here is a 55-year-old hotel that's lived this life. Hanjin and Thomas Properties have done agreement with the hotel workers there. They've done an agreement for to use local contractors and building trade workers and apprentices. And... Any city in America would be glad to have this project, and we are fortunate. We would ask that it move forward and that the city council support it, and we appreciate if it's moved forward quickly because I think everyone in Los Angeles needs the jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Rafter is our next speaker, then Stuart Waldman. After Stuart Waldman is Noel Weiss. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Tracy Rafter. I represent the L.A. County Business Federation. We're now up to eighty top business organizations that have come together throughout the county representing one hundred and ten thousand business owners in L.A. County, and we strongly support this project. The Wilshire Grand redevelopment promises real economic development to residents and businesses of Los Angeles. A billion-dollar investment, importantly, right next to the light, important light rail centers in the city. Thousands of construction jobs, as we've heard, but the permanent jobs are important, and also the convention bookings and tourism business that will be made possible by the six hundred and fifty-room four-star hotel are important. But I have two more important points to make. The transient occupancy tax reinvestment to the city that's being considered as a part of this deal is smart. The way the agreement is structured is there's no risk to the city, no impact on the city's general fund, and the deal will allow significant economic benefits. It will create value over a hundred million dollars over twenty-five years, and half of that money flows to the general fund. Lastly, and this is important and not to be missed in this day, in this moment that we're at in California, this economic development is not dependent on federal dollars. It's not dependent on a tax increment financing that's threatened by our state's efforts to take resources away from local redevelopment agencies. No, this is a city of Los Angeles economic initiative that will leverage private sector dollars. It's good for all of us. We strongly support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rafter. Stuart Waldman is next, and then Noel Weiss, and then Shiraz Tengri.
Good morning. I'm Stuart Waldman. I'm president of the Valley Industry and Commerce Association, VICA, representing three hundred and sixty businesses in the San Fernando Valley who have over a hundred thousand employees. I'm here to strongly support this project and its signage. Signage like this is a distinguishing feature for all of the top-tier downtowns world over. The proposed signage provides needed connectivity and transition to L.A. Live and the Convention Center. It also increases the excitement and vibrancy of the area for many tourists and downtown visitors as well. The Wilshire Grand SUD is the most extensively studied SUD in the city of Los Angeles, with robust provisions to reduce or eliminate impacts related to signage. The brightness levels on the signage have been adjusted down in response to concerns from the neighbors at the Wedbush Building and at the 601 Wilshire and Ernst &amp; Young Buildings. The SUD includes takedown provisions for off-site signs and prohibited supergraphics or building wraps. In addition, the developer is providing four hundred thousand dollars for study of an additional SUD area adjacent to the project and for the EIR study. The developer has worked with the city attorney for over five months to ensure that citywide legal issues will in no way be affected. There are seventy-four million dollars in community benefits being provided as a result of this development. Downtown is the right place for this type of signage. L.A. needs to move into the twenty-first century, and I urge your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Noel Weiss is our next speaker. After that is Shiraz Tengri, and then Beverly Kenworthy.
Council members and viewers, I'm not here to talk about the project. The project sounds terrific, notwithstanding the seventy-four million dollar subsidy, but I want to talk about, again, this is a classic example, I think, of the role of the city attorney that we need to take account of in this situation. Usually, these kinds of discussions will be held behind closed doors because of litigation. The question is, who does the city attorney really represent? Does he represent the special interest? Does he represent the political interests of the council people? Does he represent the people? And my view is that he should represent the people, and I think he's waffled on this signage issue because that's probably one of the only few things that the city attorney has done that's been halfway worthwhile for this city. We have here promises, promises that were made in consideration for the granting of these entitlements. Well, guess what? That sounds like Lincoln Place, where we promised that we wouldn't evict the tenants in return for the grant of the entitlements. The entitlements were granted, they violated the promise after they flipped the property. What's the protection in this situation? I haven't read the agreements, but I want to know that the city attorney has basically protected the expectancy of this council and the people that are for this project. That hasn't basically been brought up. Secondly, with regard to the overall issue of why can't we, you can obviously approve the project, you don't need the signage to approve right now. Again, it doesn't matter what I say, it doesn't matter what the council says, it doesn't even matter what the city attorney says or what the developer's attorney says. It only matters what a judge says. And the bottom line is, there can and should be a condition subsequent put in this agreement that basically would take out the offending or problem areas, and the project can still go forward, and then once a federal judge basically approves it, you've got the certainty that you need. The flip side is very, very dangerous downside to this council and to the people of the city. It's not right, and again, I don't know what the city attorney has done on this project with regard to these issues. All I know is that it's clear that he's waffled in his responsibilities with regard to these signage issues. Lastly, you're making policy on the fly, people. You have, you're making policy at the same time, you're doing this on an ad hoc basis. It's not good governance, and it's just typical of unfortunately the way the city council does business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Shiraz Tengri is our next speaker. After that is Beverly Kenworthy. After that will be Arminak Nargianian. Hi, how are you?
Good morning, council. Shiraz Tengri, I'm here on behalf of the Downtown Neighborhood Council. The Neighborhood Council has been in full support of this project since day one. I'm going to focus my comments, say, on aesthetics and architecture, given the signage district discussion. Bold, iconic, and innovative architecture has been a hallmark of Los Angeles for a century, and certainly a hallmark of downtown Los Angeles. It is very consistent with the city's identity as the world's creative capital to encourage the new, to encourage the innovative, and the fact that we're seeing something for the first time, while we understand trepidation, that's really an opportunity for the city to show that it continues to be a leader in the world of architecture. Projects like this enable the city of Los Angeles to compete with New York, Chicago, Seoul, Sydney, and other world capitals for businesses, tourists, and new residents. The Neighborhood Council has consistently supported enhanced signage along the Figueroa Corridor. It's our primary commercial corridor. It is an area that has been subject to new development. It's a linkage between the sports and entertainment zones that bring millions of visitors to downtown, as well as many of the commercial businesses that thrive within downtown. We've also felt that it's important to have opportunities for enhanced signage so that it's possible for the city to ensure that other parts of downtown, including the historic corridors and residential neighborhoods, can be protected from signage that would be inappropriate in those parts of town. So in conclusion, we strongly believe that this signage is appropriate for this location. Aesthetics have to be discussed in context, and I think the work that's been done by the city attorney and the city planning department has ensured that we can have an active, vibrant environment that still protects against the environmental concerns raised by many of the commenters today. Thank you.
Thank you. Beverly Kenworthy is next. Arminak Nargianian will follow, and then Cassandra Zebich.
Beverly Kenworthy, representing the Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. First, the L.A. Chamber would like to acknowledge Councilmember Perry on her leadership on this issue. Without her, we would not be here today. Without her, we would not have this tremendous job potential and benefit to the city. So thank you, Councilmember Perry. We'd also like to acknowledge Councilmember Reyes for his leadership on the SUD issue, knowing how difficult this issue has been historically for the city, has really vetted this in public and with the developer and with the city attorney's office. So we thank him for that as well. The chamber, as you know, is always supportive of this project. We're extremely excited we're here today in what we hope is the last and final hearing. We believe that the signage issue is appropriate for this area, that it has been mitigated, and there have been concessions made, and we just look forward to seeing this project develop and seeing it all in its full glory. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Arminak Nargianian is our next speaker, and Cassandra Zebich.
Respectable city council members, dear fellow Angelenos, as a long-time Los Angeles resident, I must oppose any attempts to finance reconstructing of Wilshire Grand Hotel. As I work for the city of Los Angeles, as a security guard for those companies like Elite and U.S. Guards, actually, I was receiving very low wages, you know, and we never cared, you know, to give me any health insurance or any housing voucher. Coming to think of those private-public partnership, I condemn it. I condemn it as corruption. I condemn it as giveaway to a wealthy. Those workers are naive. We believe we hired, no way. Those owner, private owner of the Wilshire Hotel will simply pocket all the money and will hire, and will actually pull off a scam, and those city council members are likely to be indicted and prosecuted for embezzling funds to a wealthy. And I believe that actually, if a city can only legally invest only in the property tons legally, private owners should seek private funding. Los Angeles City is not a piggy bank, where the private owners can come and clean up our city coffers, and you will not give away those funds, where the design go to janitors, to police officers, to firefighters. Los Angeles experiences serious difficulty, budget deficit, over four hundred million dollars, according to Los Angeles Sentinel. If you give away that money to wealthy developers, you take that money from Los Angeles, from our pensions fund, where those police officers, firefighters, where widows and orphans, you know, that's what taking away from vital assets. And private owners of a Wilshire Grand Hotel should seek private funding on its own. Los Angeles City doesn't owe wealthy people no, 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 no funds. And this is illegal, what we're doing, and we're likely, those council members are likely to be indicted.
Thank you, Mr. Nargianian. Cassandra Zebich is our last speaker. Good morning.
Good afternoon, city council. My name is Cassandra Zebish, and I am speaking on behalf of AEG, and we are in strong support of this project. We support this project because of the continued positive effect that more hotel rooms downtown will have on the growing tourism and convention business. Projects like the Wilshire Grand will create thousands of jobs and create economic impact to the city and region and should be supported by the private and public sector. The millions of dollars of community benefits that this project is committed to are critically important to our city, especially the community groups that will benefit from this project. Thank you.
That will close our general public comments, or our public comments on those items, on one and ten. Our next speaker is Mr. LeBange.
Now, I just wanted to rise to say, Ms. Perry, congratulations. You've crafted something that works. Always Mr. Reyes is his complimentary help. I think when you spoke earlier about signed districts, they're appropriate where they're appropriate, and they're appropriate in this corridor as we transform the center city. Because I want to, look at me, Jan, when I say, this is very important as you transform this area and how it goes, and it's very important to look that it meets with the planning department's approval with the grid system. And earlier speaker spoke of the variety of transit is there that many of you may have built or your fathers or brothers or cousins built, which is so important as we build on. The only thing I want, Mr. and Ms. planning officials there, I want to make sure the Figueroa Wilshire special stay, the streetlights, the historic streetlights. And if you look at those historic streetlights that are on Wilshire, they were put in in nineteen twenty-five, from Figueroa all the way to Parkview by MacArthur Park, and they talked about Los Angeles and what a grand place it is, and when this project's finished, it will continue to be a grand place. Are those lights going to stay?
Yes, that's correct.
Good, they're going to stay. Thank you very much. Okay, good job. I say approval.
For a recognition, I'd like to recognize Mr. Cardenas for recognition of some special guests in the audience.
Thank you very much. There's no question that everything we do in Los Angeles gets international attention. It's my pleasure to introduce the Vice Director of Beijing Municipal Commission of Ethnic Affairs, Vice Director of Beijing Municipal Bureau of Religious Affairs. It's equivalent to our Human Relations Commission here in Los Angeles, Ma Zhang Hu, and his delegation. I just want to welcome them to Los Angeles. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dennis Zein. After that will be Mr. Roosevelt.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. I want to, first off, acknowledge Jan Perry, my colleague, for having the patience to do this wonderful project that's taken so many months, and Mr. Reyes, two years, two years. We talk about the economy in Los Angeles. We talk about jobs in Los Angeles, and I'm really, at ten minutes to twelve, we started this meeting a little after ten o'clock this morning, amazed at how anyone would be opposed to this, how anyone in their right mind would be opposed to this project that's going to bring jobs, economy, and help downtown Los Angeles. Folks from the Valley are here, folks from other parts of the city are here, the construction workers are here, they're looking for jobs, they want to support their families. I just can't understand why we labor so long on something that's so obvious to help the people of Los Angeles. This is a project that's going to add jobs, economy, and make it a better Los Angeles. How could anyone be opposed to this? And this whole issue about the sign ordinance, we can fix that if that's an issue. But I look at downtown Los Angeles, and thanks to Councilmember Perry for bringing back downtown Los Angeles, it amazes me that people would be opposed to an opportunity to help this city rebound. There's so many people who are struggling to put food on the table, that are paying on four dollars and fifty cents for a gallon of gasoline, and we're discussing this issue at length when these folks are here, sitting in chambers who couldn't be working if this project was moving forward. So I want to acknowledge the folks that are here. I want to acknowledge labor. So we're talking about seventy-four million dollars or a hundred million dollars, whatever the case may be, but we're going to create jobs and opportunities, and we're supposed to be a business-friendly city. And when I wonder how business-friendly we are, how we demonstrate and how we show it, when we argue about something that's going to be so positive. So to all of you that are here, thank you. I'm totally, completely supported. I voted for this before. I'll continue to vote for it. I want to see people put to work. I want to see the economy get back so we'll have the tax dollars to support the services for the people of this great city of the angels. God bless you. Thank you for being here.
Mr. Roosevelt.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last Friday, we voted on what I call Phase One of the Wilshire Project, and I think we should bring it back for discussion here in the context of Phase Two, which is what we're talking about. We don't have to talk long, but we need to show that both are connected. It's the same developer, and we are subsidizing the bed tax for a period of time in Phase One. And we just need to understand that. That's my first request, which is I'd like to reconsider Item Sixteen on the Friday's agenda, Special Counsel Agenda File Number Eleven Oh One Oh Six, specific to the Wilshire Grand and Center Project Agreement.
Okay. Is there a second on the motion to reconsider? And is my understanding, then, that you discuss them together?
Yes. To me, it was bifurcated, and I just think people need to see the whole picture.
Okay. Is there a second on that? All right, we'll hold that on the table until there's a second.
Okay. Well, if there's not a second on it, let me just then just react to everything that's been said here. Obviously, I believe in jobs. I've believed in jobs all my life, and I've been a union supporter in the private sector when it's not fashionable. My track record speaks for itself. This is not about jobs. We will have the jobs. We will have this project going forward. The question is, how much does the city give to make it happen? Thanks to Ms. Perry, over the last ten years, we've turned downtown around. It is her leadership, her pit bull doggedness, that has kept it going, and we've seen great progress. So bless you very much, Jan Perry, for your leadership, okay? But there are few issues that need to be worked out. I always hate afterwards, oh, we didn't come to our consideration, we didn't appreciate, didn't know it. Because what I want to talk about is the signed district issue, okay? Fine, I have no problems with signs, but if we go digital, you know, we've got a hundred digital billboards at least. In my district, we've got a whole bunch. I don't know the exact number, twenty-one or twenty-two. We don't have a dime of revenue out of those, and those folks who put those digital billboards are making money hand over fist. And I'm tired of furloughs and layoffs, and I'm tired of cutting back on services. We need a revenue stream on this. So my question to the city attorney and to the city planning, what's the city's revenue stream on those two first levels that will have advertising on it? What do we get out of it? And if it flips digital, do we get anything more, or does this just set a precedent? And what are the legal issues as well? Please.
Okay. Kevin Keller, City Planning, I'll try to answer that, and the city attorney can join if there's anything I miss. The revenue sharing issue is a really important discussion for the city to have at some point. To date, from a planning entitlement, we have not included any revenue sharing in a signed district in the city to this time. I know there was talk about--
But does that mean we approve it and then we don't get it? Or is it left on the table so we can get a revenue stream?
There is no revenue sharing as part of the proposal in front of the council today. Just want to be really clear about that. There is no revenue sharing--
Why? Why?
--for the off-site signage.
Why?
That's probably a discussion the council could have in terms of a planning entitlement. Planning, the planning entitlements today also are not, are independent from any type of subsidy or other types of actions. We do not normally get involved in any revenue sharing. And this project is also no longer in a redevelopment area. So there is no, to date, revenue sharing on the table as part of this.
Well, this should be part of the deal, for God's sake. You know, the city should get a piece of the action, not at the expense of the workers. They're used all the time to fill the room.
The one additional comment I'd like to just point out, this project does have a development agreement. And through the development agreement, there are a number of community benefits in general, not necessarily linked to the signage, but linked to the project, that are being proposed, including some streetscape money, some pedestrian connections across the 110 freeway, some money to fund an expansion of the sign district to connect this area to the L.A. Sports and Entertainment District. And there is a small component of sharing of airtime for public service messages. But certainly that's in front of the council and we're happy to listen to any other comments--
You might feel as much as we all vote for this and we're all real happy, that that goes away and we never get a revenue stream, the digital has never been converted to a revenue stream, and those issues are key to the city and its vitality going forward. Look, the project's great. Who'd be against this project? Nobody's against this project. But the question is, what role does the city have in the long-term aspect? For instance, when we did the bed tax last Friday, that went without a squeak. But there was a $0.50 in every dollar they would get back. The same group that's got this lucrative strategy on Phase Two, I mean, come on, it's all the same stuff. It should be all on the table and we should have an integrity-filled discussion of all those kinds of questions before we vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Alacon is our next speaker.
Yes, the issues related to the sign district that are raised by Mr. Roosevelt, do those have to be resolved today?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question I was talking--
The issues that were raised by Mr. Roosevelt, do those have to be with regard to the sign district and any potential revenue generated from the sign district for the city? Do those have to be resolved today?
The proposal is in front of the council today for the Wilshire Grand Project, the Figueroa and Seventh Sign District, so it is up for council consideration today. At the same time--
I didn't ask that question. I said, with regard to any revenue generation out of the sign district, do those discussions have to occur now or can they occur subsequent to this agreement?
City Attorney here, City Attorney Ken Fong, I'd like to address that. Previously, we've sent a memo to the city council talking about this specific issue, revenue generation from billboards. And as you know, the council has in place a, an agreement for street furniture and the city gets a revenue stream from that. That's located on city-owned property. Something akin to that could possibly be done on city-owned property, but you cannot, for example, force somebody that has private billboards on their property to give you a share of their revenue without, you know, some reasonable justification for it, such as it needs to mitigate some adverse impact.
Okay. I'm still trying to get an answer to my question.
Yes.
Is the discussion about revenue generation for a sign district, is this the last day to discuss that issue?
Well, I would, yes, this is, this is, what's on the table now is the approval of the sign district. It's very, there are intricate legal issues involved in--
Does it prevent the city from negotiating a community benefits agreement relative to the signs moving forward?
Yes, I believe it would because what's in front of you now is an entitlement package for these signs. These signs are going to be entitled once you give the entitlements and they'll have those entitlements.
Ms. Perry, can you explain, with regard to the signs, the, do you, are you going to move forward with some kind of community benefits agreement?
There is a community benefits agreement, I'm sorry. There is a community benefits agreement, but the city attorney has advised us that we cannot link signage to a community benefits agreement. So we're following our--
So how do we, how do we, how do we resolve this if you're saying we can't, so you want to use the leverage of this deal to block this deal on the basis of revenue that could potentially be generated from the signage, but you won't allow us to have that discussion in concert?
What?
Well, I just, you know, I don't want to talk about things that we've put in confidential memos because that would jeopardize, obviously, the city's legal position on certain lawsuits. But I just want to emphasize that when you have a First Amendment-protected entitlement such as a sign, district, or individual signs, you have to be careful not to condition those entitlements on the receipt of revenue. You can--
That wasn't the question I just asked. The question was, you're telling Ms. Perry we can't have that discussion together right now? And I don't understand that.
Well, what I'm saying is there are limits imposed by the First Amendment on what you can impose on permits for signage.
You know, it's interesting, the city attorney has advised us that we can't have a conversation about the community benefits agreement, but now you're talking about the community benefits agreement.
Well, my understanding is that the community benefits agreement relates to the development agreement, which relates to the overall project and not specifically the signage.
Okay. Then why aren't we discussing them together?
If I can ask you to press your button again to pursue this since you're over time.
Well, like I said before, I believe that they're separate things. You can look at the development agreement and the development agreement, you can impose community benefits and you can get that as a component of a development agreement.
Okay. Councilmembers, we all know how this works. We've been through all of these aspects. I think, you know, there's, there's too much showboating on this issue and we need to get people back to work. Now, I don't know exactly the nature of the agreement with regard to the signs, but--
Mr. Alacon.
This is a project, we need to get, get people back to work and that should be our priority--
We're over time. Ms. Perry is our next speaker. Just press the button again if you want--
I was going to close it. Thank you, Mr. President. Are we almost at the end of the queue? Okay, I can go last. I can go, Mr. President, I'll go last.
All right, Mr. Reyes is next.
Collins, what's, I'm trying to be careful how we approach this issue. This is one block of a larger sign district, so we can be consistent with how our sign ordinance is evolving. So the development agreements will come into play. We will have the sign revenue issues addressed within the context of a larger sign district that is already being developed. So you have one block that we are paying attention to right now. And that one block would be within the context of a greater sign district. And so the revenue will come within the negotiations of all the stakeholders within the greater sign district that's now being developed. And which is a task that has been taken by the council member of the district, council member Perry. So I just want to lay out the procedure and how it's going to evolve. I don't know if you want to call this showboating, we're trying to give you the facts of how the revenue will be created from this signed new district. And that discussion, as it evolves, will emerge the community benefit. So I'm sorry we cannot address your impatience to find out how much dollar figure is there now, but we can't get there until we get the full sign district established. So I want to lay that out for clarity.
Mr. Roosevelt.
Yes. What would be helpful, Ms. Perry, is if you separated the sign district from the project. Let's get people back to work, let's build a beautiful hotel, and put the sign district on hold until we have more clarity. The reason I say that, look, if we approve the entitlement of the sign district today, that puts the developer with a bigger muscle than the city. So I think you put that on hold, you go forward with the project, and we see what kind of revenue streams we can get out of the sign district before we approve it. Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
A question for the table. 1% of the arts, does that apply here?
Yes, my understanding is that 1%--
What is that? That's a contribution, correct? I want to hear what the 1% of the arts is.
Correct. Kevin Keller, City Planning, the 1% of the arts is also further explained in the development agreement to mandate that the art component is onsite and will be provided in the public areas of the plaza--
But will any of it go to our cultural affairs department that needs to help grants? See, this is an important point. 1%, I feel if there is some work that is done, it should obviously be credited to the project, but is there anything that is coming to help transform communities' cultural affairs?
There is no change in the normal process for the 1%--
Is it 100% only on the site or does anything go for--
My understanding is that the entirety of the art component would be provided onsite on the plaza. There's a large landscape plaza at the corner of Figueroa and Seventh--
So for 1% of what?
Of the project, 1% of the project's cost.
So what do you guess the project cost is?
I've heard a lot of--
Does anybody know what the project cost is?
I think a billion dollars was thrown out there, but I can't go on the record--
Say it. 1.2 billion. So who did well in math at high school? What's 1%? How much? Tony, how much? 12 million? So 12 million in art will be spent there. I mean, I want to stand for the cultural affairs department, I think that's, I don't agree totally with Mr. Roosevelt at this moment in time, but I know there's a process that we have going here, but it's a good point that we could see something for cultural affairs or if it isn't all there. Who estimates what the 1% is?
Mr. Labange, I think it's off of the TOT, not off of the development per se. So I think it's a low amount, but we can--
Does anyone know that?
We can find that number for you.
But I agree we should start working. How soon will they break ground, Mr. Planner?
Kevin Keller, just a clarification, my understanding, and again, the art fee is not something that planning oversees, but it's 60% onsite, 40% offsite--
Oh, that's good, that's good. That's a benefit to the community. That's very good. Good job. Okay, now, when are they going to start construction? When are we going to see the tractors roll?
Once planning grants entitlement, there is no, you know, planning is not involved in the actual breaking ground, but it's our understanding that the applicant does intend to move forward with the demolition process of the hotel immediately.
Rapidly. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for the answers.
Mr. Cardenas.
What we're, this item here, it involves a development of a building, correct?
The item, yeah, the items in front of the council today are the sign district, the development agreement, and the transfer of floor area rights. So the project itself, the majority of entitlements were approved at a prior meeting, but the project as a whole cannot move forward without the transfer of floor area rights. The development agreement is a tool that gives some certainty to the developer and the city in terms of how the project would move forward.
So basically, what I'm hearing, my interpretation of what you described is, this is a project in its entirety. This isn't just a project or a development that only has signage. This is a project that has something to do with a very large facility, a lot of square footage, a multi-multi-million dollar project that has multifaceted responsibilities internally and apparently externally with the agreements with the city, correct?
That would be correct, yes.
Okay. That being the case, I think that's, whether we like it or not, it's a separate issue, colleagues, from sign districts in general, and whether or not we're going to figure out a legal way to work with future signage, which Mr. Roosevelt points out, it's an extremely lucrative and fast-moving development of signage across the country and around the world, where it would be very unfortunate if the city of Los Angeles just sat there with their, sitting on their hands, not engaging in that particular world of potential for revenue and cooperation with organizations that are now multi-billion dollar organizations that have, if not hundreds, but tens of thousands of signs across the city of Los Angeles. It's unfortunate that we haven't addressed that issue, but I say unfortunate because what we have here is one particular development that has a particular sign district that it's a part of. And unfortunately, we haven't gotten around, as a council, to making sure that we address the larger issue for the larger picture for the entire city of Los Angeles. So hopefully, what we can get amongst ourselves is some urgency from the council that we will address that issue, hopefully, in the coming months and not in the coming years. There are various motions that are sitting there in the purview of the council to address the various ideas and approaches, such as what Mr. Roosevelt talked about and Mr. Labange talked about, of all the need for services that the city would like to render. And here's an opportunity, in my opinion, that's slipping through our fingers. So hopefully, through all of our efforts, we can encourage our colleagues to make sure that we put it on the agenda sooner than later. It takes a lot of work. We're cutting back on the planning staff, we're cutting back on every staff, and it's a big, big endeavor. But I think it's important that we get going on that because if we don't, we're just letting it slip through our fingers and every month that goes by, that's revenue that could have come to the city. And instead of just dealing with it from a lawsuit vantage point, we need to deal with it from a policy vantage point. And we have to stop being afraid, as a council, to go ahead and do our job and just listen to the city attorney's office keep telling us, wait, wait, wait. While we're waiting, we're actually cutting the city attorney's office budget as well. So it doesn't even serve them very well either. But when it comes to this particular item before us, I want to applaud Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes, and the various staff and council members that have been very involved in this, that this is a pretty darn good project and I'm pretty darn good at putting it lightly. And this is something that we need very badly. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Ms. Perry for the second and Mr. Roosevelt for the third.
Okay. Let me, let me just go through this very quickly then. Again, I just wanted to reiterate what we're talking about here today. And it's as amended, you have 10A and 10B on your desk. One motion includes the supplemental findings in support of adopting the sign district. And the other motion is a revised ordinance which establishes project-building thresholds before allowing signage, ensuring that sign rights are only provided when a truly iconic project is developed. So again, the ordinance before us today does comply with our existing sign ordinance and it does allow sign districts to be established on one block. Now, just so you're clear, the city has begun work on the proposed separate and apart from that, the Figueroa Corridor Sign District, which will link Los Angeles Sports Entertainment District ultimately to the Wilshire Grand. And I hope results in a very cohesive planning effort. But what I just wanted to remind everyone, since we're talking about the development agreement and community benefits, 2015, let me get, new revenue, 22 million a year, and that includes TOT. New jobs, 7,300 new construction jobs, 9,700 net new jobs, net new jobs, jobs that weren't here before, that will be permanent. The developer entered into a project labor agreement and will participate in all apprenticeship programs for all the trades and all the jobs, the construction jobs are going to pay prevailing wage. We have local hiring, first source, and local minority business recruitment. The developer's going to implement a first source hiring policy and a local minority business recruitment program for exempt employees, for subcontractors, and permanent jobs to facilitate the employment of local and minority job applicants and businesses in conjunction with the development. The job training program, the developer will provide $150,000 to Los Angeles Trade Technical College for the Hospitality Program and to the YWCA Job Corps to provide job training that can result in future employment at the development. Living wage, the developer will comply with the city's living wage ordinance for non-retail entities in the project. And then, of course, the unprecedented health, welfare, and severance to the existing 480 Wilshire Grand employees. And again, they have agreed to the collective bargaining agreement to the new hotel. The developer will pay for the health insurance for the 480 employees while the new project is under construction. This will cost the developer $11 million. And in Phase One, the developer will provide $4.3 million to streetscape and pedestrian improvements on Seventh Street and Wilshire Boulevard. And in Phase Two, the developer will provide an additional $4.7 million. The developer will provide $400,000 to the city to fund the necessary environmental analysis for the Figueroa Corridor Sign Supplemental Use District or SUD. The Figueroa Corridor SUD, which is in the early stage-- environmental analysis for the Figueroa Corridor Sign, uh, Supplemental Use District or S U D. The Figueroa Corridor S U D, which is in the early stages of analysis, will be on the east and west sides of Figueroa between Wilshire and Olympic. The developer will provide five hundred thousand dollars to implement the next train, next bus technology within a project site in partnership with the MTA. The developer will also provide a minimum payment of over five hundred thousand dollars to our own Affordable Housing Trust Fund or directly to an affordable housing project. If the developer decides to build residential units within the project, the payment will be seventy-five thousand dollars multiplied by fifteen percent of the total residential units. The developer will also provide a mobility hub in the plaza area of this project of three hundred square feet with free rent for three years. This space will accommodate bike parking, bike lockers, and shared bikes. The developer will also provide six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Los Angeles Department of Transportation to purchase an additional downtown shuttle hybrid bus. And I just wanted to go over that one more time and then mention, uh, motions ten A and ten B, so that everybody understood what was before us today. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Alacon for a second time, then Mr. Rosendahl for the third.
Yeah, just to be brief, the, uh, it's clear that, uh, that Ms. Perry has negotiated benefits to the community that would not otherwise exist without the total package here. Uh, I trust that in the broader, uh, Figueroa Sign District, that, uh, that the Wilshire Grand will pony up again in terms of community benefits that will be derived from this project because of the leadership of Jan Perry on this issue. This is, this is about jobs. We need to get, where the building trades are, are suffering upwards of forty percent unemployment, we gotta put these people back to work. Uh, the, uh, the disaster in Japan will have an effect on our, our hotel industry. It is a concern, and, but we have to rebuild it. Uh, and where two hundred and seventy thousand Japanese visit our, excuse me, three hundred and five thousand Japanese, uh, visit our city and spend two hundred and seventy million dollars a year, uh, it is a concern. Um, but what is gonna bring them here? Uh, I believe, I was here when we initiated the development at, at the Staples Arena, uh, and I can tell you that we have turned the downtown area around, uh, and a lot of, there were a lot of naysayers coming up with this reason and that reason. And there's, there's still people who might not think it's perfect, but I'll tell you, the downtown area is far and away better than it was, uh, when I started on the city council in nineteen ninety-three. And Wilshire Grand is one of those opportunities that has yet to be seized, that we have that opportunity today. Uh, so for all those reasons, this is something we should move forward very aggressively, very supportively, uh, and encourage Ms. Perry to, uh, negotiate whatever agreements can for the benefit of the community, uh, when those opportunities arise again. Uh, but, uh, right now, it's about jobs. It's about improving, continuing to improve the downtown area, and this is a win-win for the people of Los Angeles and the downtown area.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. City Attorney, if we approve it, first of all, can we separate the sign district aspect, which, you know, digital signs, we're not getting a dime anywhere in the city. It's all been talk, 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 and they've made a ton of money, the various sign companies. Uh, can we separate it legally and let the project go forward so we can create the jobs?
Well, that's, that's a policy decision, but they need to have the sign district in order to have the signage above the citywide sign regulations, in order to have the extra signage-
I'm sure, but can't we do that at another date instead of holding up the whole project? So that we can be in a position where we can demand a revenue stream out of those signs rather than no revenue stream at all in it? I agree with Ms. Perry, the benefits far outweigh the liabilities for building the hotel, but it's that revenue stream from digital billboards and other billboards that we don't seem to be able to get our hands on. Here's an opportunity to say to the developer, hey, folks, we love everything, but let's put this little part on hold until we get a chance to clear it up and understand how it can impact absolutely all of the signage in our city, the digital billboards in my district that we don't get a dime from in my face all the time. Can we separate it?
Well, it's, it's your legislative prerogative whether you want to approve or not approve the sign district, so that's my understanding.
I just don't wanna throw the baby out with the bathwater either. Do I have a second for my motion to separate the sign from this? Anybody wanna second it for me so that we can go forward with the project, but not the sign thing until we know what a revenue stream is? No? No, no, no second? Thank you.
Mr. Labange.
I just wanna, uh, make this point available to all of us. In my research, there's a gross receipts tax, that any sign that's up there is paying a tax. It goes to the second floor of our treasury. So there's a revenue stream there that exists, and as Mr. Alacon spoke eloquently moments ago, as he always does, that, you did too, Tony, as he always says, whatever is developed, to develop. But all the hard work that took us to get here, we should call for the question, let them get to work.
We have, uh, Mr. Kirkorian for the first time. After Mr. Kirkorian for the first time, we have Mr. Parks for the first time. Mr. Kirkorian.
Well, there was a call for the question, then.
You can't, you can't speak and call the question. You can only call the question with no, if you ever speak, you cannot call the question at the end of your speech. A, a motion to call the question is the only thing that you can utter, so it was a symbolic call of the question.
But some of Mr. Labange is resounding-
It was an aspirational motion. So, Mr. Kirkorian.
No, I just, I just wanted to touch upon a couple of points, because, you know, look, around this horseshoe, in the audience, even among the speakers in, who had criticism in opposition, there's been unanimity that this is a good project for Los Angeles. Unanimity. There hasn't been a single person who came up and said, this is a bad project, or trying to slip something past us, it's gonna be terrible for downtown. Not one person. Uh, and now what, three times that we've been, we've heard this, there hasn't been a single person who's said this is a bad project. So we have a unanimous opinion about the, the quality of this project. It's been a long and thorough analytical process. Unlike other things that we've considered, some other things that we've considered here that have attempted to be expedited, this is something that's been going on for two years, and Ms. Perry has been shepherding it through this process in a very transparent way for two years. Um, now, I've spoken up often about the need to, to preserve, uh, communities and to, to recognize the difference in communities. In this case, we've got the neighborhood council of downtown saying, on board, saying this is an important project to move forward with as it is here before us. We've got all of the, the concessions that have been made in terms of project labor agreements and local hires, gonna be critically important for our local economy. We have benefits for the hotel workers right now. This is a good project that we ought to be going forward with. Now, there was issues, obviously, with the signage and with the architectural lighting. Um, but, uh, folks, neighborhoods are different. You know, what's appropriate in, in downtown L.A., at the corner of Figueroa and Wilshire, may not be appropriate in, uh, on the west side, or in Studio City, or, or in Coinga Pass, or other places. Um, this project in this location is different than those other places. So when you have somebody from Marina Del Rey complaining about architectural lighting at this site, when the neighborhood council of this site is urging us to go forward, that just doesn't seem appropriate to me. What we have is an investor willing to put a billion-dollar investment in the future of Los Angeles, who's ready to make a gamble, step forward and say, I believe in Los Angeles, and I'm putting a billion dollars on the line, uh, that, that proves how committed, uh, they are to the future of Los Angeles. And I just don't think this is the time, this is the hour, at this late stage in the game, to be saying, let's make some additional changes. We've got somebody who's ready to go, um, these folks are ready to get back to work. We've got a critically strategically important part of downtown Los Angeles that we can change and bring life to an entire new area of downtown Los Angeles. Uh, I, I just think it would be a mistake to continue, uh, to try to make revisions that will discourage not only this billion-dollar investor, but the next billion-dollar investor as well. So I urge your eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Kirkorian. We have, uh, a number of new speakers. Mr. Parks, Weezer, Han, and Smith for the first time, which would just leave you. Mr. Kretz, not having spoken, just for, for the record. Mr. Parks.
Call the question.
The, uh, question, the call on the question means to end debate, because there have not yet been, uh, each person speaking for two times that are on the queue. This is a ten-person vote. Uh, Mr. Weezer, Ms. Han, Mr. Smith, and Ms. Perry still remain on the queue. Um, okay? Well, we'll see how the vote goes for Ms. Perry and, it's, Mr. Weezer and Ms. Han. Please open the roll. A yes vote is to end debate, a no vote is to continue. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right. That passes the unanimous vote. Now, that's not the vote on the, uh, full issue, that is just, that is just a vote to end debate, that is not yet a vote on what is before us. But I, I'm sure that's why you were applauding as well. Never before have so many been so enthusiastic about the ending of council member discussion. Um, with that, we have before us, Madam Clerk, we have two, uh, amending motions, that correct? Are those, is there any objection to those?
Just for clarification, I was gonna call for jobs and call for the vote.
I think you just, I think you just snuck in a comment, but we'll take it. Um, with that, uh, we will, uh, if there's no objection, accept those as friendly amendments to the overall, which means now we vote on the entire package together as amended by motions ten A and ten B. Is everybody clear on that? It's a single vote? Okay? Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes, one no.
That means that, wait, before you, it is a, uh, a thirteen-one vote, but, uh, because there are ordinances involved, um, that will carry over one week, and next week it will require only an eight, eight-member majority vote. So we will see you in a week. Thank you very much. And, um, we've had a request to take up next item number twenty-six. There's no objection. We'll take up item twenty-six now. Um, and was that notice for cards, uh, Madam Clerk, or has there been a hearing?
Yes, there was cards, notice for cards.
Okay. Yeah, would you like to take the cards first? Yes. Uh, no, they were not approved yet today. Um, so we cannot move them today. We do have, um, for item twenty-six, um, public speakers, Tom Moxley and Marielena Duraso and Robbie Hunter are our first three speakers on item number twenty-six. Thank you for your understanding as we, uh, take up this item. Folks who are exiting can take their conversations outside. Thank you very much for your appreciation of that. Tom Moxley is our first speaker.
Well, thank you, Mr. President and Council. My name's Tom Moxley, and I am the president of the LA Orange County Building and Construction Trades. As most of you know, Richard Slosson's last day is Thursday, and how appropriate, a man who's worked fifty years, over fifty years at the building and construction trades and twenty-one years at the councils, with one thing in mind, bettering the lives of people, providing career opportunities for all youth, men and women throughout L.A. County and Orange County. And how appropriate, today we are addressing an issue of renaming the, uh, Public Infrastructure Stabilization Ordinance, to call it the Richard Slosson Public Infrastructure Stabilization Ordinance. City council members, I urge you to vote in favor of this in honor of Mr. Slosson. Thank you.
Thank you. Marielena Duraso is our next speaker. Then Robbie Hunter.
Yes, on behalf of the Federation of Labor, we want to acknowledge the extraordinary contributions that Richard Slosson has made to the lives of working people, especially in the construction industry, but he has served as a vice president of, uh, broader labor movement, and he has always been there in defense of all rights of all workers across L.A. and across the country. So we are adamant, adamantly and excited about, uh, the renaming of this, um, of this, uh, policy in honor of Richard Slosson. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Robbie Hunter. And then Walter-
Robbie Hunter, Los Angeles, Orange County Building Trades. Uh, Richard Slosson, you know, fifty years he's been in the trades in Los Angeles. I'll give you a little bit of his family history. He was born in St. Louis. His father's World War II veteran, that did nineteen landings in the Pacific during World War II. His father's brother was a Marine killed on Iwo Jima. Uh, Richard has a plumber, pipe fitter uncle that went to Congress and, uh, could have probably went to Congress here in L.A. himself if he had a run. Uh, the twenty, the twenty years that he's ran the building trades, he has put tens of thousands of young people in this city in the apprenticeship programs. He has made sure that the projects in Los Angeles are safe for workers. He has worked with developers to make sure that developer would, would have a profit, and, and one of the main reasons was that we like to do repeat, repeat business. He understood if we do business with somebody, our handshake needs to be good, our work needs to be good. Uh, the developer we work with, the owner, needs to make money. Uh, we never back a project that doesn't have a full environmental. Uh, we live here as well. Uh, Richard Slosson at the, uh, L.A. USD, uh, fifteen years ago, they tried to pass a bond, they couldn't get it through to revolve all the old stucco schools with no air conditioning. He got together with L.A. USD, they passed a, a couple of billion-dollar bond, he went on to do three more bonds with the school board. Uh, he's done the same thing with L.A. Community Colleges. So in Los Angeles, from the time somebody goes to kindergarten till they finish high school, and if they're working family, they go to the L.A. Community Colleges, and someday come out the other end, it can be a lawyer and, and really help their families. Uh, they all really owe a piece of that to Richard Slosson, and he has taken the building trades to the top of the mountain, and, uh, we deeply appreciate what the city council are doing here today with this, this resolution. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Christopher Zidicab, Christopher Zidicab and Walter Breton, too. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Christopher Zidicab. I am a German wireman with the I B W Local Eleven. I'm here today in support of the renaming of the PLA to the Richard Slosson's PLA, and, um, he has given lots of, uh, people in the city of Los Angeles, including myself, I was organized in through a PLA agreement, and given a great opportunity of being an electrician. And I just think to honor a man that's done such hard work for all of us, as, uh, it would be a great opportunity for him. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. Walter?
Good afternoon. Thank you. I'm honored to stand here, and, uh, I'll just say two quick things. Ditto to what Robbie Hunter just said, and the other thing is, um, God, what was your thing? Anyway, that's probably good enough. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Walter. Appreciate it. That'll close our, uh, public comment on this. Uh, Ms. Han?
Thanks. I, I just wanted to rise in support of this, uh, great idea to rename this the, uh, Richard Slosson, uh, Public Infrastructure Stabilization Ordinance. Um, as Robbie said, boy, there's a lot of, of folks, uh, way before us and, and will be way after us, uh, that have benefited from the leadership and the vision and the courage of Richard Slosson. Uh, there are people who've had great careers, uh, who have bought homes, who have sent their kids to college, uh, who have been able to have a quality of life, uh, that is important in this country. They've had, uh, uh, Richard Slosson has helped to protect the middle class, um, in California, and that's worth protecting, uh, worth nurturing, and it's because of his insistence, uh, that folks get a decent wage while they're on the job, that folks have good working conditions while they're on the job. Um, his, his gentleness, um, his gentlemanliness, is that a word? Gentlemanship? He's a gentleman. Um, he, uh, thank you. He, uh, he walks into a room and people respect him, uh, people listen to him, and he's had that way all these years. Um, and his number one issue was always for the working man, the working woman on the job. This is a great idea, so that generations to come will wonder why this ordinance is named after a man named Richard Slosson, and hopefully, the stories will be told over and over again about how this man, uh, stood up day after day, job after job, project after project, uh, protecting the men and women, uh, that he was given the responsibility to look after. So this is a great idea, uh, and I'm happy to cast my vote for this.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. President. Richard S-
Richard Slosson, where are you? Why are you in the back of the room? I wonder if you have you come up front and center. As I said when we got this passed, we wanted to really thank you because there's so many people that passed through City Hall and different jobs, and they don't leave a legacy. This will be a legacy forever, and although we call it a PLA, what people forget is the intern program that creates careers and the local hiring that creates revenue in our city and our region so that we're using our funds to make sure that we're continuing to redevelop our own economy. Your participation in this should be historical, it should be in our records, and it doesn't serve the purpose by just calling it a PLA. That's why when Jan Perry and I were sitting here dazing in some discussion that we were not paying attention to, we said, let's do something for Richard Slosson so that it's memorable, that it's forever as a part of our records. And the best way we can do it, because I don't believe we've ever done this before, is to add your name to the name of this ordinance. And so that's why we created this, and I think it's important that we acknowledge it because few have made the impact that you've made in your career, your 50 years. And I told you personally, the trades are so important because it keeps the economy going. You move things, you build things. And the trades have been important to me because it made me go back to school when I was there in summer jobs, working as a lather and as a hog carrier, the two toughest jobs I've ever seen, made me go register at LA City College and say, is there another career? And so I appreciate that, and I will always be grateful for that education and learning point. But I just want to say personally, thank you for what you've done. It took over two years, but it will be with us forever. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weisar.
Thank you. I just wanted to sincerely express my support for the renaming of this ordinance. I think it's very well deserved, as been mentioned. And, Richard, I just wanted to point out the work you've not only done here in the city, but at the school district. When I got to the school district, and like was mentioned before, we hadn't been able to do our best work, but with your support and the trade support, we got a project labor agreement in there that delivered quality schools for our young people. And you've been an advocate for working men and women, but at the same time, you've been working well with those institutions to get the best for the common good. So thank you so much for your service. I think that as we move forward, whenever we talk about project labor agreements or supporting working men and women in the city of Los Angeles, we're all going to be thinking of you. So thank you very much, and have a great retirement.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Alakon.
Yeah, I didn't realize this was going to be a tribute, but we are talking about an individual who has impacted Los Angeles more than anybody who is not known by the general public. I don't think I've ever voted for an ordinance to be named after somebody, so this is really unique. But as much as Richard Slosson's name is not a household name in Los Angeles, and now that this ordinance is named after you, it will be because everybody in Los Angeles will read that ordinance and know that you wrote it. Perhaps later we can also provide a square or a street or something else that others who might not have read the ordinance would understand. I thought it was great when, when Mr. Parks asked Mr. Slosson to step forward, everybody filled in behind you because it's never been about Richard. It's always been about the people behind him because these are the people that he has been dedicating his life for, for 50 years. And, and I think there isn't a major construction site or part of the infrastructure in Los Angeles that doesn't have Richard Slosson's fingerprints on it. Now, elected officials can come and go over 50 years, but this guy has been there all those years. And I said the other day that having come out of Mayor Bradley's office, I used to hear a lot of speeches about how we needed to improve the skyline of Los Angeles. But as much as Mayor Bradley had impact on the new skyline of Los Angeles, Richard Slosson has had just as much impact and should be recognized for changing downtown Los Angeles in particular. But this cuts across all of Los Angeles because there isn't a project, like I said, of significance anywhere in Los Angeles that he hasn't fought for to ensure that we create jobs with good benefits and quality pay. Worked with you on labor agreements way back when I chaired Public Works in the 90s, and labor management agreements to ensure that, that labor was listened to, not just for collective bargaining reasons, but also because you have great ideas and you're working day in and day out. You know where the problems are, and, and management needs to listen to the workers every once in a while to get a better idea. But, Richard, thank you so much for your service to the city of Los Angeles. This is a small tribute to the tremendous amount of work that you have done, but more importantly, the real tribute is in what's out there, is in the subway, is in the skyline, is in the, all the massive infrastructure projects that you have worked on. We thank you so much for, for keeping Los Angeles working in a middle-class way and providing great jobs for these people. We still need you, so don't go far. We'll be needing to call on you every once in a while to, to support that same cause. But thank you so much for your service to date. We wish you well, and again, we hope that this small tribute to your work serves a useful purpose and lets you know how much we appreciate what you have done for this city.
Mr. Kretz.
Well, Dick, everything has already been so well said, but I just want to say I'm, I'm glad that we found an appropriate way to recognize what has been an incredible career. Few have done so much for the building trades and the labor movement and created so many jobs. Your work has been amazing, and I've had a chance to work with you in two cities as a council member, a unique perspective, both here in Los Angeles and great stuff you did in West Hollywood with project labor agreements and other things. So I just want to say you've had an incredible career, you've had so many accomplishments, but you've also just been a great guy all along. And so it's my pleasure to, along with my colleagues, recognize you for all your great work and for being a great human being.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yeah, it's obviously a tough one, Dick. I saw you wanting to talk to me over there, and, and people have said, I got to talk to my friend. Well, I've known you for 30 years, and you know, today, more than ever, we need a strong middle class. The jobs are being outsourced all over the planet, and what you did and do is so fiercely protect the working men and women who are standing here with you right now. And that kind of leadership, we need more of it because we're not sharing the pie equitably in this great country. The rich are getting richer, and the middle class is being pushed into the working class and onto the street. And it's really taking our great nation and putting it in a very marginalized situation. A lot of us have lots of ideas about what we're doing overseas and everything else. We need to invest in our infrastructure, in our education, in our health care, and you've been a fighter for the people your whole life, and I know you're a young guy like me, and hopefully you can come back in some other kind of way, but thank you for all you've done for all of us over the years. God bless you. Thank you.
Mr. Labaj.
Many names for mention, Tom Bradley, others. I hope you get a fourth chapter, whatever you do. You don't have to come back right away. What you've done is you've put a great foundation, like workers do, in the ground. I hope you can enjoy whatever part of life that you want to enjoy because I think you've worked very hard, and what a compliment. And when you call someone after a name, I think of Mr. Quimby, who was a state assemblyman who said, we're park poor, we need to have parks. And he passed a law called the Quimby Law. It gives us acquisition of land for parks, which is so important. Hopefully, your name will be synonymous as it gets through the records there, but enjoy your life, whatever you do, because you have a foundation. There's a lot of strong people behind you that you've helped create and the efforts that you've made. Congratulations, Dick.
Mr. Zion.
Richard, I want to congratulate you, and the thing that's always impressed me about you is your demeanor, always very mellow, always very calm, never pounding the drum, never making threats, just saying this is what's right to do, the right thing for the people of Los Angeles and for the workers you represent. You have an army of people behind you. They've been there supporting you, and your attention to this council has obviously demonstrated the support of what's brought it together. So congratulations on the retirement. You've been there many, many years, but the army of people behind you are in those positions because of the fight that you've carried on in a very, very professional, respectful manner. So congratulations and best wishes to you and your family in the future.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zion?
And if, if you'll indulge me from the chair, Dick, you've been an amazing friend to this city. You've been a builder of buildings, you've been a building of a great council, you've been a builder of community, and you've been, as reflected here, a builder of great friendships, which is really the true mark, I think, of a man and who he is to his people. Thank you for all you've done. Long before I was elected official, I got to know you. Thank you for your support of my family and my father and the great friendship we've been able to have working in Rebuilding Hollywood, another great neighborhood that today, I know we talked a lot about downtown. We couldn't have done it without you and without a, a strong team behind you. So whether it's somebody who's just getting into the trades today because of the work that you've done, or somebody who's holding on to what they have for their family, the city of Los Angeles truly owes a great debt of gratitude to this angel and the City of Angels, Dick Slosson. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Absolutely. We, I'll, if you'd like to say something, we, we already closed, but I'll yield the rest of my time if you'd like to say something to the council and advise us how we might vote on this.
Thank you very much. It is an honor, absolutely, first and foremost, for all the craftspeople that work out there every day and the building trades, craft unions, and the council to have a name of an officer of our organizations on a city ordinance. We have worked together with the city over the years to create good jobs, to create fantastic new edifices here in the city, both things you can't see every day and those like the LA Live project that you can see when you drive down the freeways. But it's been an honor working with all of you over the years. There have been times when some electeds that we work with on an almost daily basis, we don't see eye to eye, but we all can come together around the idea of good jobs and putting middle-class workers to work on public projects as well as in the private industry where developers like Jim Thomas are trying to move the city forward. So thank you very much. It is an honor to have my family name attached here. And just an aside, Slosson Avenue is actually named after a distant, distant relative, Jonathan Searns Slosson. So it's a double honor now to have my name placed on this ordinance. Thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you very much. And it's now time for us to, to take a vote, and we can work on amending the first name on that other street, so we'll, we'll do that as well. Let's go ahead and open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
As unanimously approved. Congratulations and thank you. We'll send that forthwith without objection. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Mr. President. We could reconsider items one and 10.
All right. Let's go ahead and open the roll on reconsideration of one and 10. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That's back before us. Mr. Rosenthal?
I'm going to excuse myself and be out of the vote here so that you don't have to wait another week to go forward with the project. I've made my point. Thank you.
If we can remove Mr. Rosenthal from the queue, and let's go ahead on items one and 10 then. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote as amended.
12 ayes.
That is approved today. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas, and that will go forthwith without objection. Thank you very much. So to be clear, two corrections. One, it would have been a 10-member vote, not an eight-member vote, but today we reconsidered it, and we unanimously passed that now with 12 votes, so that project will move forward today. If we can take up item number 12 next, please. Okay, we're going to take one brief, we'll take a brief moment, and we'll come back in two minutes for, we'll take a brief recess to take a photo with Mr. Slosson, and, and we'll come back for item 12. All right, we're back here in session. Just to reiterate, we went forthwith on items one and 10. Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I just wanted to let the members of the public know that if you thought you had to come back next week for items one and 10, items one and 10 were reconsidered, and as a courtesy, Mr. Rosenthal helped us pass the item unanimously, and we appreciate his cooperation. Those of you who thought you had to come back to the city council next week for items one and 10, that is not necessary. They have been passed unanimously, and therefore the items have gone forth, forthwith. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Rosenthal?
I'd like to talk about item 15. This is a precedent, item, item 15. What we're doing is here...
We're actually on number 12, Mr. Rosenthal. Did you want to take...
I thought we... I'm sorry. I was talking about the item 15.
Oh, okay. Wait, hold on one second. That was just a thing on the last one. We actually have 12 before us. It's up on the board. No problem. Don't worry. 15's coming in just a moment. Item number 12, we have... Yeah, Ms., I'd like to recognize the chair of our TCT committee, Ms. Han.
Hey, colleagues, actually, this is a great item to take up after frankly talking many, many hours about the Wilshire Grand. And Councilor Rosenthal, I know you had a big concern about the stream of revenue that the city might realize through a project like that, and I, and I believe that's important. But I think this item, 12, is a good... But I think this item, twelve, is a good example of how really we are going to benefit from tourism. We are going to benefit from hotels, and everyone in Los Angeles will benefit from what we're doing on item twelve. This is about setting up a Los Angeles Tourism Marketing District, which we'll call a TMD. And this is about the hotels coming up with their own initiative to put an assessment on hotels with fifty rooms or more, which will raise money that we will be, that L.A. Inc. will be using to market Los Angeles. Currently, by the way, we are under-marketed. We spend less money in the city of Los Angeles marketing Los Angeles than many of the other cities. Las Vegas spends ninety-four million marketing themselves. Orlando spends fifty-four million. New York spends thirty-two million. San Diego spends twenty-six million. San Francisco spends twenty-three million. And Los Angeles, currently, we only spend eleven million dollars marketing Los Angeles. So the hotel industry came up with this idea themselves. This is not something we're imposing on the hotels. They actually organically created this assessment. It will be a 1.5 percent assessment, which will generate between ten and eleven million dollars annually. So it'll bump our amount of money that we're spending marketing Los Angeles closer to San Francisco and San Diego. This money, again, will be spent marketing Los Angeles, all of Los Angeles. We expect this marketing to help our downtown Los Angeles area, but also Hollywood, the airport area, the San Fernando Valley, the West Side, waterfront communities. San Pedro, I know, is looking forward to some of this money going back to marketing the cruise industry. So this will really help everyone, and we know, by the way, here's the statistic that I enjoy saying, is, you know, for every increase of even four percent of tourism in Los Angeles, that translates to about twelve million dollars to our general fund. And our general fund dollars, of course, as you know, is where we can then use that money to deliver services back to the residents of Los Angeles, our police, our fire, our street services, our libraries. So this is really, I believe, a great initiative. I want to have city staff come to the table. I know we do have some public comments, but I want staff to come to the table. Miranda, Mark, if you want to come and explain a little bit how this is going to work, when does this assessment start, when will we be collecting? And Mark, one of the things I know people listening, San Pedro is going to want to know, Venice is going to want to know, how does this help them? Or is this money just going to go downtown L.A.? Or will the rest of, will the valley benefit from this? Will San Pedro benefit from this? Will the West Side benefit this? Maybe you can tell us how this will work. But I think it's a great opportunity, colleagues. I think you should help pass this today because the hotels, again, want to do this. They want to spend more money marketing Los Angeles. Tourism, number-one industry, it's important. I can see you giving me the look, Tom. I will sit down and push my button again.
Thank you very much, and I know if you have a question on the table, I want to also call on the chair of the committee which you came from, Mr. Alakon. Thank you.
Yeah, councilmember, what's actually before us is a communication from the Jobs and Business Development Committee, based on a motion that Ms. Hahn introduced and requesting an ordinance from the city attorney and in cooperation with the hotel industry. As I mentioned earlier, we're anticipating significant concern about the, relative to the disasters in Japan, because so many Japanese visitors come to Los Angeles every year. So I couldn't think of a more timely time to introduce or to establish this ordinance, and that's why we supported it. And as Janice said, anytime businesses want to group together, this is essentially a giant bid, a business improvement district, where they want to contribute their own dollars to establish a marketing program to put our hotels in a better position to compete with all the other hotels in the region. So I want to thank Mark Lieberman for his leadership at the council, the L.A. Tourism and folks have been doing, L.A. Inc. have been doing a great job of promoting Los Angeles, but they need to, they need to have the ammunition. And this provides them with additional ammunition to be able to fill the beds, to ensure that people are visiting Los Angeles on a regular basis. I only hope that things grow from here. And so for those fifty hotels that are participating, we want to say thank you, Ms. Hahn, for her leadership in this issue, as well as L.A. Inc. for organizing the ordinance itself and working with the city attorney. Thank you all, and I urge your eye vote on this matter.
Thank you. Just a brief report from the center table.
Absolutely, thank you. I'm Mark Lieberman. I'm the president of L.A. Inc., Los Angeles Convention and Business Bureau, and Ms. Hahn really characterized exactly what we were, are planning to do. You know, tourism, of course, as you know, is the number-one industry in Los Angeles, and last year we were able to have, to attract a little over twenty-six million visitors that contributed about twelve billion dollars to our local academy. The Tourism Marketing District, as you've heard, will create additional funds only for the sole purpose of selling and marketing Los Angeles and bringing more visitors to L.A. And of course, those visitors hopefully will stay in our hotels. Half of the visitors that come to Los Angeles do stay in hotels. The others, of course, are staying with friends and relatives. As was mentioned, we really need this monies to compete with our competitors, those being San Francisco, Anaheim, and San Diego. Presently, there are fifty, a little over fifty Tourism Marketing Districts that have been established in the state of California, and this, of course, will allow us to address specific needs of Los Angeles hotels in all of our regions, whether it be in the valley, the airport, Hollywood, the West Side, coastal areas, and downtown. Again, as mentioned, this is a hotel-led initiative of the one hundred and fifty-seven hotels that have over fifty or more rooms, and the hotels have approved this with an over, with a vote of over seventy-five percent, and we look to you for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk.
Hi, Miranda Pastoff, Office of the City Clerk. I wanted to point out that this Tourism Marketing Bid is being established according to the Streets and High Risk Code, Sections 36600 in sequence, that it's only for hotels with fifty or more units. And it was, in terms of the process, we were required to get fifty percent of the petitions of those hotels, and we actually received seventy percent of the petitions in favor of this establishing this district. The approval process includes adopting the ordinance of intention, which is before you today, as well as a public meeting that's planned to be held on May twenty-fifth, and a public hearing on May, let's see, May, I'm sorry, the public meeting on May tenth and the public hearing on May twenty-fifth. We also will have it come back on the public hearing with the ordinance of establishment that we'll ask for you to adopt, and after that, the ordinance would take about thirty days after the mayor signs it. It will take about thirty days to go into effect. We anticipate this bid and the collection of this bid for July first of this year.
Thank you very much. I would, we have some cards. Most are in favor of it. I don't want to lose a quorum. I have ten members right now. I'm going to ask Mr. City Attorney, I'm going to call for a one-minute public comment. If you need more, I'll allow you to have it. I'm going to call Kathy Falk, John Walsh, James Elmodorf.
Hi, I'm Kathy Falk. I'm the general manager of the Omni Hotel here in downtown. I've been downtown for four years and been involved in this project for the last couple of years. As has been stated already, it's been a very organic effort with the hotel community aligned. If we focus specifically on downtown, we compete on many levels, but I can tell you on this, we are, we are aligned together, and we're competing with San Diego, San Francisco, and a host of other cities that don't, that pale in comparison to Los Angeles. So really, you know, what this is about is marketing dollars that will sell, help us sell Los Angeles as the city in California to come to. More marketing dollars creates the opportunity for more occupancy, that creates more revenues, that creates more jobs, more tax dollars back to the city. So I strongly urge you, and I think the hotel community does as well, to support this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org, Facebooking at Miki Jackson, M-Y-K-I Jackson. Of course, we're in favor of this. We just don't think that the under-fifty-room units, under-fifty-units hotels should be exempted, because that's the heart and soul of our prostitution hotels. Why shouldn't the prostitution hotels that cater to guys, white guys, who pick up minority prostitutes?
And Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh.
Why don't, this is, this is an issue. This is an issue. The First Amendment, we are asking for it to be expanded to include all hotels, all motels. HollywoodHighlands.org. See you around, buddy.
Thank you very much. James Elmodorf. Bert Senegal. Followed by Bruce Gorlick.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bert Senegal. I'm the general manager of the Beverly Garland at Universal Studios, also the chair of the Valley Visitors Bureau. It is imperative that our city be competitive with our sister cities in this state. It is important that we pass this initiative. Our occupancies with the economy before were at seventy-five percent. We're in the high sixties. Our, the economy was a major downfall of our occupancies, but it's also because other cities are taking advantage of their TMDs and marketing their cities and pulling business from our city. Increased occupancy means increased jobs and increase of revenues to this city and its TOT taxes. Again, I ask you very much to be in favor of this initiative. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. From the Fine Renaissance Hotel in the thirteenth district of the City of Los Angeles.
Did you say my name correctly?
Well, next time.
Bruce Gorlick, general manager of the Renaissance Hollywood Hotel. Good afternoon, everybody. Just to add to some of the comments that were mentioned earlier, the group was very thoughtful to make sure that when we were looking at the assessment, that in adding to our current TOT and taxes, that we remain competitive. It was mentioned earlier that we're competing against San Diego, Anaheim, San Francisco, et cetera, and we were very thoughtful to make sure that when we added the one and a half percent, that we maintain our competitiveness. Because we're not only competing in the California market, we're competing against New York, Chicago, New Orleans, et cetera, et cetera. So there was a lot of thought to put together so that we remain competitive, but it's imperative that we continue to grow our coffers, as was mentioned by Congresswoman, Councilwoman, maybe hopeful, Councilwoman Hahn, that, Gordy, I slipped, I'm out of time.
Thank you, Bruce Gorlick.
Thank you.
Okay, appreciated there. Glenn Samper. John Marco.
Good afternoon. I'm Glenn Samper, the general manager of the Weston Los Angeles Airport Hotel, speaking today on behalf of the eight thousand-plus rooms at the airport, as well as the LAX area, coastal area Chamber of Commerce. We don't have a convention center at the airport that helps attract large group customers. The funds of the Tourism Marketing District will really help us and L.A. Inc. go out and find the right customers for us that will fit into our buildings and serve our customers, and we really do feel that this is going to be a benefit for all the hospitality stakeholders in the area. Six years ago, I was in another city that implemented a Tourism Marketing District, and it delivered on its promises. We doubled the funds available to the Visitors Convention Bureau without hurting the visitor count to that city, and I just ask for your support today. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, John Marco. I'm the general manager from the Coata Hotel. It's a one hundred and sixteen-room independent property in downtown Los Angeles, representing more of the smaller hotels, more than fifty rooms. Certainly, we need this. Business is starting to improve, but as Mr. Alakon indicated, with the tsunami and the conditions in Japan, things will be tough. The monies will help us generate more revenues, as Ms. Hahn said, it'll generate more revenues, more people coming to the city, spending people, and I was before Mr. Alakon's committee, it will generate jobs. This year, I'm a small little guy, but I added three, I hired three more people this year. So, you know, it's a little bit, if everybody adds a couple here and there, it's a few more people back to work, so this helps across the board. Thank you.
James Elmodorf, last call, James Elmodorf. John Marco.
We got him.
Thank you, John. Got that right. Zar Zalinski. Forgive me.
Thank you. Mike Chartchinsky from the Weston Bonaventure, and also chairman of the Board for the Hotel Association of Los Angeles. I'm here to speak on behalf of all the hotels in our association in support of this item, so please pass it, and I'll keep it short. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. David Weisman.
One thing I don't see on the material in the agenda is where is this? We've heard from the Beverly Garland, we've heard from the Bonaventure, we've heard from West Los Angeles Hotels. This, I presume, is downtown, somewhere near the convention center, but it's not on the agenda. Could somebody clarify that, please?
Thank you very much. Mr. Lieberman, will you please answer the question?
This is, this is for all hotels in the entire city of Los Angeles. Fifty, fifty rooms or more.
Thank you very much.
That represents about one hundred and fifty-seven hotels.
Beverly Kenworthy. Greater Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Beverly Kenworthy with Los Angeles Area Chamber of Commerce. I will keep this short. We echo all of the positive support that you've received so far, and we urge your enthusiastic support for this really exciting marketing district that was initiated by our very own hoteliers of our community, and it will help all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That completes the cards, members. No speakers on the queue. We want to thank Mr. Alakon for his great leadership of a Janice Hahn initiative that brought this about, and L.A. Inc. did a great job. Madam Clerk, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Eleven ayes, very good. And this will be an ordinance, right? And it has to come back for a reading next week, but it's passed. Good job, everybody. Mr. Alakon.
Fourth with, please. Have to wait. In a week, can we have a fourth with, please?
Yes, you can, guaranteed. Thank you, thank you. So we need twelve votes. We have eleven. Come back next week for a final reading. Good work, L.A. Inc. Next, I'd like to recognize the fine councilman from the eleventh district, the West Side of Los Angeles, Mr. Rosenau.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's regarding item fifteen. Folks, I appreciate the fact that you've been here for many hours. There were obviously lots of other issues. I truly want to hear you speak and hearing that some of you feel that you'd like it continued for a meeting when there's more council members and in a better timeframe in the day. If that's the, if that's how you all feel, Mr. President, I'd like to continue that item and ask our president, Mr. Garcetti, to find a meeting date that, that fits in the schedule that allows most of us to be here to hear it.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenau, Mr. Garcetti.
Yeah, I'm happy to accommodate that. We want to make sure, I see Ginger out there, and thank you, Ginger Damon, who's part of this great coalition of folks, and I saw the White Paper. I think it does deserve plenty of attention, and whatever you want to do, we can do it, that future date, if that's better for right now, but we'll work with you. I don't know if there's any upcoming meetings where there's zero missing, but we'll get as close to zero. There might be just one absence or something. We'll find the right date. And it's really important, as we frame our budget, to hear first from you all, from the voice of the community as well.
We're going to check. Look at the attendance book real quick and try. And Mr. Rosenau, could you explain?
Yes, while he's looking at the attendance book, did any of them want to make a minute comment or sue or tantalize us, or just wait until we have a meeting? You all want to wait? Okay, thank you again for that, and I appreciate you staying as much as you have through this meeting.
So as we confer right at this moment here, we want to thank again our clerks and our city attorney.
We've got two, we've got, we've got fourteen members and then thirteen on the fifth. I think that's our best shot, so I continue to April fifth. Does that work for you guys as well, April fifth?
April fifth is so ordered. April fifth, so ordered. Madam Clerk, what's before us right now?
Council has motions for post and referral.
Very good.
Hold on one second. Before we post and refer, I believe Mr. Weisar is coming down on the previous item.
Before we post and refer, I believe Mr. Weeza is coming down on the previous item so that we can have a 12...
Sergeants, for Mr. Weeza, please.
While we take just a quick recess, maybe one minute while we wait.
Well, as we do, we will hold for this right here.
We can do announcements right now if you...that would be an order.
Is there any announcements at this time?
I don't know. Yes, Mr. Kardas has them.
Mr. Kardas.
Yes, the annual Nouru celebration will be taking place in the Sepulveda Basin, otherwise known as Balboa Park, this Sunday, all day long until dusk. That is the Nouru celebration. Once again, last year, again without incident, we had over 20-plus thousand people there, and it's wonderful food, entertainment in a public place, and it's a very family-oriented event. Again, it'll be this Sunday, April 3rd, in the San Fernando Valley, in the Sepulveda Basin, specifically in the Balboa Park area of the Sepulveda Basin, all day long till dusk, the Nouru celebration, which is the New Year celebration for the Persian community, and also it is a celebration of spring as well. Again, we've had this celebration for six years now, and it's gone on without incident. We look forward to seeing as many people as possible. It's a family-oriented event. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kardas, and for your leadership in that very important event. Just a general announcement, a general announcement. Planning Land Use and Management Committee will start 15 minutes from its usual time at 2:00 P.M. 15 minutes. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Also, I just wanted to share with everybody that we had a memorial yesterday for Secretary of State Warren Christopher at Disney Concert Hall. Hillary Clinton was going to attend. She had to be in London for the Libyan conference, but we did have Condoleezza Rice there, as well as Madeleine Albright, Governor Davis. The three people who spoke not from the family were Strobe Talbot, the head of Melvynian Myers, and Vice President Al Gore gave one of the eulogies and just spoke to what a great, great man he was. And we heard from the family as well about what an incredible family man he had been, but we marked that occasion. And Mr. LeBout and I will look forward to naming in the future the square right next to where he attended high school, Hollywood High School at Sunset and Highland after Mr. Christopher.
Thank you, Mr. President, for representing us so well so many times. Members, we have 12 members on the queue right now. We can reconsider item...
Item 12, I'll move to reconsider.
Number 12?
Item 12.
Mr. Alakon?
Reconsider.
Ask for reconsideration by Mr. Alakon? Okay. Madam Clerk, open the roll for reconsideration.
You can second my request.
Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, what before us is this matter before? There's no speakers on the queue? We're going to re-vote on this issue? So we reconsidered, now it's before us. Madam Clerk, no speakers on the queue. The matter is before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
12 ayes. Recognize Mr. Alakon from the 7th District.
Thank you, thank you.
This is gone forthwith, please. All right, there's no other action before it's next order business. Announcements have been made.
Council has motions for post-nam referral.
Refer those, post them.
There are excuses on the desk.
So ordered.
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused on May 10th for city business and on July 5th, 6th, and 8th for personal business, and that meets council policy.
Yes.
Councilmember Weeza requests to be excused on June 24th for personal business, and that meets council policy.
Yes, thank you very much.
That clears the desk.
Okay, members, we're going to stand for adjourned motions at this time. Any adjourned motions? Yes. Sergeant, will you please have everyone rise for adjourned motions? 28 forthwith. Adjourned motions, Councilwoman Janice Hahn.
Thank you. I'd like us to adjourn today in the memory of Barbara Wise, who passed away peacefully in her sleep on March 11th. She was 86 years old. She led an active and full life over her 86 years. She loved her community. She served it in many capacities, receiving 35 community service awards over her lifetime. She was recognized with a lifetime achievement from the Seraptimus of Los Angeles. She was Employee of the Year from the Apartment Association and the Paul Harris Fellowship Award from the Rotary Club. She was a longtime Chamber Member and Economic Policy Member of the San Pedro Chamber of Commerce. As a breast cancer survivor, she was especially supportive of the recent fundraiser we have called What a Pair in San Pedro. Bobby will always be remembered as a kind, passionate, hard-working, and self-sufficient woman. She's survived by her three sons, Scott, Andy, and Brooks, daughter Cindy, six grandchildren, Tyler, Katrina, Eleanor, Ethan, Chloe, and Evan. The services are going to be held today at 3:00 P.M. at St. Peter's by the Sea Presbyterian Church in Rancho Palos Fertiles. She lived a great life. May she rest in peace.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Garcetti.
I ask we adjourn today, Council, in memory of Private First Class Rudy Acosta, United States Army, who was killed on the 19th of this month in Afghanistan by terrorist gunfire. He will posthumously be receiving the Purple Heart. He lived in Santa Clarita and graduated from Santa Clarita Christian School in June 2009. He immediately joined the Army to serve his country and lost his life serving us in Afghanistan on the 19th. His funeral will be on Thursday, March 31st, at Santa Clarita Baptist Church. In January 2011, Rudy spoke at Santa Clarita Christian School, encouraged the kids to stay in school, work hard, and fled by God to join the military to serve their country. He loved school, got good grades, and loved history. Little did he know that two months later, in Afghanistan, he would lose his life. The funeral, as I mentioned, will be Thursday, the 31st of March, at Santa Clarita Baptist Church. All members, may he rest in peace.
All members, and always remember those who serve us. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?